October twenty eighth meeting of the town of Rutland Planning Board. Uh, I believe we do not have minutes uh from our last meeting because I think Keith was taking in. Received any so uh on to our first item, uh which I don't know if this looks a little kind of interesting. It says stormwater rules and regulations discussion with Weston and Sampson.
Yep.
Supposed to be here.
I'm still going over that document with the rules and regs. Bylaw, I'm pretty much okay with it's the rules and regs. I think we need to take a serious deep dive into.
Well, um, so if I may, Norm, at the board's request to want to to ask more questions about that, we had reached out to Jerice if she could attend this meeting and we had sent an email to the board to let you know that she would be here tonight. Um, so it looks like she just hopped on Zoom.
Okay, well, I just wanna say, uh, welcome, uh, and I don't know where we're gonna start with this. Any, is there anything you'd like to start out with?
Hi, everyone, um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
You can, hi, Jerice.
Hi, um, yeah, my name is Jerice Schwartz, I'm with Weston and Sampson. Um, we've been working with the town for the last um several years to help in complying with their MS four permit. And so one of the main kind of requirements facets um that we've been working on is, you know, creating um that meet the requirements of that permit, um, and this is definitely is a little behind in in meeting this requirement and has obviously actively really been working to catch up on.
Jerice, can you repeat what you said, uh, as of like twenty seconds ago? You've been cutting in and out, I apologize.
Okay, is that better now or am I still cutting in and out?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yeah, no, like I said, so the town has been obviously working hard to catch up on meeting these MS four permit requirements. This is a federal EPA permit um that regulates um, you know, stormwater discharges from the town to waters of the US. Um, I think all of you know, the town has in place um a stormwater utility that's really helped with the town to obtain funding to kind of meet these requirements. And so, you know, one of the bigger requirements is related to developing um a stormwater management bylaw and supporting stormwater rules and regulations. Um, this is a requirement that technically was due in permit year three, we are now in year eight of the permit. Um, so obviously something that's that's important and that, you know, the the EPA has reached out to the town um regarding kind of noncompliance with this requirement. And so at this point, um, you know, the EPA has issued kind of an administrative order, kind of um outlining that by December thirty first, the town is to adopt the stormwater management bylaw and the supporting rules and regulation. And of course, you know, this timeline is is kind of fast approaching, um, so we had been working with the town to to draft these documents. Um, and they've, you know, got under, I mean, the bylaw went under review by the the town's legal counsel. We worked with the bylaw committee, we had a meeting last week, a public information session. Um, you know, also to answer any questions that came up on the bylaw. Um, the bylaw is gonna go before town meeting for approval um at fall town meeting next month. Um, and then the next step after that is to adopt the supporting rules and regulations. And so again, it's a tight timeframe with that December thirty first deadline. Um, but of course, the the rules and regs can't be adopted until the bylaw is in place because the bylaw gives the town the authority to enact the rules and regulations. Um, so the purpose and intent here is to try to start, you know, reviewing and looking at the rules and regulations and trying to get this document into a format that it can be um adopted soon after um town meeting sometime in December um at, you know, a planning board meeting while also recognizing that a public hearing needs to also be held, I believe, related to the rules and regs um by the planning board, I think maybe thirty days prior to adoption at a public meeting. Um, so, so, yeah, so here tonight, just to kind of initiate this kind of first conversation uh with the board regarding kind of the rules and regulations, um, you know, try to answer any questions that the board has. Um, and I can certainly provide a little bit more of a synopsis as well, if that's if that's helpful. Um, but I mean, the goal really was to align these rules and regulations with what's absolutely required by the permit. Um, and I guess just just to kind of step back a sec second and kind of give more of a big picture focus on this is, you know, this is all related to um construction and post-construction stormwater management. So we're looking at new development redevelopment projects um that disturb an acre or more um of area um or a part of a larger common plan of a development that disturbs acre or more, so like a subdivision. Um, and so there's certain, you know, requirements that need to be met. And again, the focus is really all about, you know, protecting water quality in terms of the requirements.
Question number one, why is the planning board on air? I feel that they should not, it should be up DPW period, they're the ones that have been doing it in the past, let them continue.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would see, yeah, you know, in different communities, they've approached it differently. Um, you know, usually it ends up being the planning board, sometimes that might be the conservation commission. And I know this was brought up at the public information session, you know, should the conservation commission be the point person here? Um, you know, they're gonna be submitting um a stormwater management permit application and, you know, that that um that permit application, although, you know, the planning board might be the the initial, I guess, governing authority, um, would be circulated and, you know, reviewed by other entities like the Public Works Department and um, you know, the the conservation commission and and perhaps maybe there'd be an outside, you know, peer review if if the town needed additional support in reviewing certain, you know, certain applications, depending on the the technical needs of that application.
That's right.
So I guess that's certainly up for discussion if the the planning board's the appropriate board, um, you know, to oversee the these rules and regulations.
Norm, that's why, and I know we'll get into this later, but in our twenty twenty seven budget, I put support staff in there of like thirty two thousand, which is like sixteen dollars an hour. That was gonna be the support staff from the fees that we'd get from the um permitting process to be able to handle. Because of course, we're not day to day, so the intent was to have have a support staff, a I hate to use the word, but clerk basically, that would be handling all that documentation and distributing information out to the other boards and basically making sure that everything was um the permit, excuse me, the permit was filled out, the fees were in, all the drawings that were there, all that stuff, that was why I put that into the support staff. Because I talked to Chris about the fees that were potential and with the amount of monies that I saw in the fee schedule in the um rules and regs, and again, I have, I've haven't got all my comments back for that yet, but um I I felt that we could use that money, and again, I don't know how coming in and out of the general fund um these fees are, but I would presume they would not go into our revolving fund, they go to a general fund account. And then that person would be um supported out of that general fund. So from the planning board's perspective, I sort of took a a shot at what, if we're gonna do this, because it's written now, it's basically going to the town, is that we have somebody that's gonna be able to handle this, because I I don't think the this should be a planner's responsibility for handling this. Should be the, if you wanna call it the overseer, but there should be an individual that's doing it, that's my opinion. So I put it in there and I wanted to put it up to the board for discussion when we get to, because that's the only reason I added support staff is mainly because of this requirement that we have out there.
Well, that's why I say ConCon would probably be the better, because they have to see it anyways for wetlands and whatever is around there.
But they would need support staff too.
We don't, you know, subdivisions and, you know, it's a.
I'm okay, but I think at this point, the bylaw's gone before the town, there's no changes, so.
What?
My, somebody tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, bylaw's getting voted on next month.
I know it's getting voted on, but we can't change it at all? What the heck kind of a town is this? We haven't even had a hearing even. You had a hearing?
They had an information session because it was a general bylaw and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, there's no hearing requirement, only information. If it was a zoning bylaw, then there'd have to be a hearing, but because it wasn't, um, this isn't a zoning bylaw, it's a general bylaw. I I might be wrong, but that's my understanding. Okay, so that's again, reason why when I looked at the budget for this year, I put the planner's salary in there, which was the best guess from what I knew from John's salary. But I put in, we need support staff because we cannot, the five of us are not gonna be able to do this. And having a planner doing it with as much A and Rs and subdivision that has to be taken on. And we saw how busy Dealie was in just being the new planner. Um, I I really believe that a support staff, at least for what I put in, we're not looking for a professional, we're looking for basically a clerk that could handle this uh documentation and basically filings, anything like that, so. That's the reason why I put it, and maybe I was short because I just said sixteen dollars an hour times two is thirty two thousand. I could be, and again, maybe that money is is a part-time position and it's a higher salary, I don't know, but I just put something in to put a placeholder. Because like I said, when I looked this rules and regs and and I appreciate Weston and Sampson, because I, when I first looked over the bylaw, I couldn't find any forms or permit, and then when I went through the regulations, I go, that's what I was looking for and a fee schedule. So with those two things, I think we've got the tools, I shouldn't say we, the town has the tools to handle um this. Um, so that's my take, so I'm, I actually am okay with the bylaw, Dick, with it being the uh planning board as long as we have support staff. If we don't, I think this is gonna be a mess, I really do, because the board's not gonna be able to handle it, and I don't think the planner is either, my opinion.
I think with the fees that are on here for what it costs for those permits and there's out of the fees for professional
Yep.
to have it overlooked by professionals, you know, you know what I mean? We know there's nobody sitting here in this room right now that's stormwater professional, so, but there are people that do it and that's out of the the fees or the money's there for that.
Which is similar to the hundred dollars that you take, you've got a management section, if I remember right, ten percent of those fees can go to management. So I thought, let's model the thing after what uh DPW's doing with the uh stormwater fees. Um, come up with somebody that could do the work for us, so that's my thoughts, I'll leave it up to the board where they wanna go with it. But that's where I went when I put together this budget that we can talk about later in the meeting.
That sounds good to me.
I get it, Dick.
We gotta, we gotta do our own business first, we're kinda, we can't be
Well, that that's again, that's.
into this, right in the middle of everything.
That's the reason why I put this in there, because without a clerk or someone to help us, we're gonna be swamped. I mean, we we have enough with business that we have to handle and the planner does with the research. And then the additional role of uh community development of, I mean, again, this is my take on what the planner's done in in the past, the last two planners. Um, Dave George is, he helped with Mike Nicholson to get a commercial real estate person in here to sell that property at the DPW. I mean, that was a phenomenal effort by those two to get somebody in here. And then when it came to negotiation, if I remember right, and Shelly, you tell me, there were three people, it was Ron, Dave George and um Mike Sullivan that did the negotiations to get it to the point where it could be handed over to the HPDD to actually do the technical portion, but um Dave was a a key component to that support. I considered him like the technical project manager for the job, so he was good at that. And then John took over when, of course, Dave, um, but we got into a little lull period because of some ZBA issues and some slowdown in sales and such like that. But John handled any of that from the community development with the RDIC up at Harmony Place, so. Both of them were heavily involved in the community development, and again, from that perspective, I uh I just didn't see the opportunity for them to take on this new role, so that's why I put it put in there. So I said it too many times, I'll shut up.
I just had one more comment to add just for kind of perspective to a little bit, and and I agree with you, you know, it is a lot, um, you know, for communities to kind of take on. Um, but you know, thinking about that threshold, that one acre threshold, um, you know, it'd be interesting to see how many projects you might have met, you might have seen in the last year or so or the last couple of years that have met that threshold. Um, some communities have been aggressive setting that threshold of disturbance lower and obviously they're gonna see a lot more applications and obviously that increases, um, you know, the needed resources and stuff um to manage this effort. So, but it'd be interesting to see like what what you're seeing for, you know, development redevelopment projects that meet that threshold. And so, you know, expectation of what you might see kind of going forward.
Norm, I mean, just for a comment to, for comment, our minimum development's one acre. So we basically see that almost on everyone, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't know, I think, I think we need maybe clarification on that, maybe because, you know, for example, the, okay, there's a house lot that's one acre, but not all of that one acre may be disturbed.
Correct.
Right.
In in most cases, most houses, houses do not take up an acre, you know, including even some even septic and driveway and all that stuff.
That's where we would probably in the rules and regs get more defined.
Yeah, there's, there's flexibility in there.
Yeah.
Also for the board to make decisions and on that, if you, there's a lot of parts to it.
Yeah, the pre-development, Chris gives us opportunity to do that, but I just was saying, on a on a general basis, our minimum's one acre.
It could, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just, we could see a lot of applications, and again, I get back to for the fourth time, that's why we need somebody. And I know adding to staff is not something the budget can typically support with some of the structural deficits this year, but I think our sales pitch is the fees that'll be coming in, we'll be able to use those to offset, so it'll be a, what's the word I'm looking for, a zero cost to the town?
That's not, just somebody trying to move into town costing them more to.
Oh, I get it, yeah, but I think that's any, if, in Sam, Weston Sampson, but I think that's everywhere in the state, the requirement is, so.
Fortunately, because I have, town would be better run with less rules and regulations, no paperwork, no town employees and less headaches.
Anyhow, that's it, I just think, I don't think we have much of a choice, it's going to town, if it gets adopted, we need to spend a lot of time make, going in these rules and regs, because it's thirty one pages and I've only made it through ten and then sort of at the end, look for the.
First seven is definitions.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a bunch of pages in there that are not actual rules and regulations, but the the key is we have to, EPA says we have to adopt them, we have to have a set of rules. The rules don't have to go in front of a town meeting vote, all they do is, they can be amended at any time by the board with a hearing and changing, changing the rules, that's, that's why they don't have the rules be part of the town meeting vote, because you'd never be able to change it. Bylaw is very broad.
Yeah.
And then it's, the fine tuning was in the rules and regulations.
No, what, what, once again, what about this this timeline for the rules and regulations?
End of December.
Yeah, and to me, that, if we get the bylaw passed, um, again, I don't know what the state's gonna say, but if we got the bylaw, I don't, just with these thirty one pages and to go through it, this is my gut feeling, it's gonna take the planning board at least a couple, three meetings to get through all these rules and regs, so I would see more of a January timeframe or maybe early February before we get it cleaned.
No, that's why we're talking about this now.
If I may, you have to have a public hearing at your November twenty fifth meeting. You have to, Jerice said you have to hold the hearing thirty days before adoption, you have to adopt it by December thirty first.
Yeah, I I mean, we've been backed into a corner for this, uh, that's fine if that's what's supposed to be adopted, but the bylaw will be in place.
The thing is, we can change, we can change the rules and regulations anytime.
Yeah.
So we can, you know, do the best we can, adopt them and then dive right into getting ready to make changes.
And you can work on them now, you don't have to wait till it's in place to work on these, you know, you can have, you can be ready. You can look at these ahead of time.
You can probably assume that the bylaw will be, you know, in place, because it has to be.
I just, I I've never.
It would be a bad situation if it's not.
Yeah, well, see, that's, that's, I I never know at at fall town meeting what happens, do you get a hundred people show up? Do you have thirty people show up? Do you have people that don't want it because there's a cost involved and they've already spent enough money in tax dollars? I don't know, I agree that it has to be passed, there's no, and and I'm fine with it, I've been through the bylaw, I get the planning boards in there. But I, me personally, I always like to wait until it's blessed before I start, I mean, definitely going through these and making comments, but to adopt them, wow, so we would basically have a public hearing five days after, if 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 the town accepts it. I mean, we're gonna have to be ready, because that means we've got only one more me- meeting to talk about this before the public hearing, so. I mean.
Seven more months.
Yeah, well, I'm in this, I'm in your boat too. But again, we won't know if we have a person to do this until the spring town meeting, because this is the person that we're asking for the budget won't, wouldn't be approved or resolved until the fall town meeting. So we're gonna have five months of nobody physically other than a planner, if we get hired by January, a planner to do this. So again, there's, again, five months in the big picture, I get it, but.
You just think you have to hire an outside vendor to over, to look at the, any application?
Yeah, we could do a consultant, that's something that's that's available too, but.
So it'd be in place starting Jan one?
Yeah.
There's fee, there's money in the fees for for that, you know.
The 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 question.
Should cover everything without, we're not trying to make money on the thing.
No, it's a very caving situation.
Just gotta cover our costs.
Yeah, yeah, and and I like that, when I read that, that's basically what, if anybody reads into the rules and regs and the bylaw, it's not to a a revenue generating fee for the town, it's to cover the costs. And I'm fine with that, I I actually, I like that portion of it. The tough part I was is like, how the heck are we gonna manage this? And I know we had an information session, but we're the, the the tough part I had with the bylaws, we're the enforcement people and we, I guess, in the bylaw, gives us the opportunity to delegate that to someone. So I don't know if we delegated Chris to somebody in your group or delegate to the town, to the town building inspector, I'm not sure. But it's not gonna be the five of us, that's for sure, or Lord, you're, although this could be a write-in for the uh um associate planning board member what's required. I'm kidding, I'm just being a smart aleck. But that's, that's my one concern with this bylaw getting passed and the rules and regs. We couldn't put anybody in place until July first is when the new budget comes into play, if I ever mistaken, so. To Chris's point, we'd have to have, we'd have to have outside support until July first for six months. So anyhow, that's just my thoughts.
Anybody else, anything on this one, like I say, we're, we're stuck.
I mean, it sounds like we're gonna have to start working on on, you know, the rules and regs next, the next meeting, because obviously it's not on the agenda and everything and away we go, I mean, we're, we're the nail, not the hammer in this situation, like the the state is gonna, you know, dominate us in this one and we will hopefully comply uh with their every whim and not get a target on our back. Then we can, we can go about changing the rules and regs that don't, don't, you know, line up with what we want as a town ahead of time, but then we can start, you know, moving them into into place come the new year, but.
I guess, and I know, Chris, you can't answer this, but would this be part of the, if someone's applying for a building permit, would this be part of the process for the building permit too, or is this just a separate function?
I don't believe that would have anything to do with the building from that.
Okay.
It's more, it would be more on the property of the lot or it's more geared towards subdivision stuff.
Okay.
Because it's large amounts or industrial stuff, but we don't have a lot of that in town, but
No.
it, this, this is more geared towards that.
Okay.
Industrial and subdivision stuff.
I'm learning.
There's a bunch of um exemptions in there, stuff, I mean, you know what I mean, agricultural stuff, you don't, you don't need to get permit to do agricultural work. Have to do permit to to mow property or maintain property or, right. So there's a bunch of exemptions in there.
Okay, good, again, I I got, it's, what page is this?
Is it retroactive for stuff that's already been approved? So like with, let's say, Bear Hill Two or Noble, like, is, is it gonna affect those, do we know?
That'd be an illegal thing, I'd.
My gut is, I I'd ask Weston and Sampson, but typically when we enact bylaws, they're not retroactive, they're from day of bylaw being enacted, that's my.
I'm just meaning like with the state coming in, do you, do you know, uh, Jerice, if if this is retroactive to other uh developments that have already been approved?
No, it's not retroactive, and I I know this, this question came up at the public information session. Um, yeah, so it's not, you know, um, it says, you know, exempt activities include, you know, any worker projects for which all necessary approvals and permits have been issued before the effective date of the bylaw.
So anything new that would be coming to us is where would we come into play? And I can't remember, Jess is, if, if someone's developing an A and R properties with X amount of properties, that's considered part of the stormwater regs, is that correct? Like seven or eight, I I don't remember the number. Yeah, what, I guess I'm.
Ask Jerice that question if I may.
Yeah.
Jerice, it's to me, I just have a quick question, um, what number of houses triggers stormwater, is it four or five?
So it's not, it's not a number of houses again, so it's the amount of, just the amount of disturbance, that acre. But presumably you were at a development that had four or five houses, you know, you're definitely probably triggering that acre of disturbance as part of that, that project.
Okay.
And if you do, uh, let's say I have a three acre lot and I clear out an acre for the land and the house and the landscaping and all that, that would be an acre of disturbance, correct, not just the foundation?
Correct, yeah, yeah, it does pull in other.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
So then I think a lot of these probably would, because there's a lot of clear cutting of area around, nobody wants a tree falling on their house and everyone like that.
Yep. But to Norm's point, if it's a, just a single acre of property and they're clearing a half acre, it wouldn't trigger it.
Right.
Okay.
As far as I understand it.
Yeah, well, we can change it in the regs if we wanted to.
It's Weston Sampson and Koloski, right?
That's all I had.
So Keith, I know you're just joining us.
Yeah, just late driving, sorry guys.
We have our uh visitor from Weston and Sampson, um, stormwater bylaw. Anything you've come up with?
Um, I mean, I did, I, I did read it, I made comments a while ago, I guess. Um, if this is a meeting really for everybody, I was just wondering, um, the bylaw generates money, um, but who who's in charge of using it, I guess? And and does it go to town vote when it gets used, or is it just?
No, let's keep, and sorry, like, the, what I did in that green is I put uh a s- a line item in there for support staff, and the only reason that support staff was put in was to manage the monies that um will be coming in.
Oh, this is something else, I thought we were doing stormwater.
Oh, it is, but this, but I said the stormwater, um, there's no way a planner or or the planning board's gonna be able to manage this permitting process. And so Chris had spent, I thanked him a lot for half an hour explaining to me the bylaw and the fee structure and the amounts, and based on those fee amounts, I figure there's enough money to, that'll be coming in that we can use that for administrative purposes to have have a clerk or someone manage this permitting process for us on a day to day basis. Because the, you weren't here, but the idea was it's a zero, it's not a revenue generated for the town, it's basically coming in, using the money to.
Spend immediately.
Yeah, it it would be general fund money, so it would come into the general fund and the clerk would be paid out of the general fund. It wouldn't come into our revolving fund, so we wouldn't be managing it, it'd be managed by the town basically, under the finance, under the treasurer.
That's a topic for another day.
Okay.
What you're talking about here is a revolving fund, because it's the only way you'd be able to hire an outside consultant to pay it immediately.
Oh, boy.
So create another revolving fund.
I guess so.
That's a change to the bylaws, just so you know.
Yeah, that would, that would have to go through town meeting, which would be the spring, which that would again, hold us basically five months of not being able to do anything. So again, you're right, Seth, this is getting into the weeds, we just need to get the big picture, I guess, at this point and prep for the weeds. That's my opinion. And bylaw's already on the warrant, so it's, it's happening.
Yeah.
It's these rules and regs where we've gotta get it cleaned up and, uh, Keith, before you got here, we have to do this by the end of the year, have the rules and regs in place.
Yeah, I think I saw some memos from you guys on that, which is definitely a hard deadline, for sure.
We, we tried to extend this. She said, she said, we've, we tried.
Yeah.
State's not gonna do it.
They're done.
Sounds like we're way behind us today.
Done waiting, you know, it was, this bylaw was supposed to be two, three years ago.
This was talked about before you came on board, when Joe was here and just never got done, that's all there was to it. So I remember this discussion at a select board meeting, it's in place, we. I remember this discussion at select board meeting, it's in place, we gotta do it, let's get it done and just.
Plan catch up, when we're getting there, this is one of the big steps right here, this bylaw in place.
I guess if 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 um. The woman that's helping us out, eh, does she see these get modified, or do they do they stay as is? Do you see towns?
We have the right to modify it. Yeah, the rules and regs, we can modify, it's the, once the bylaw's in place, you gotta go through the whole process, going through town meeting to modify. But like Chris said earlier, before you got here, the bylaw's pretty general, it's the rules and regs that are gonna be basically the. If you wanna call it the details to the bylaw.
Yeah, okay.
And Norm even had a good point, i- if we get this passed by the end of the year, it doesn't mean January one, we cannot decide to. Modify it by going into a meeting and having a public hearing, so.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah, and just for perspective too, there's, so there's about two hundred and fifty communities in Massachusetts that are subject to these requirements that are. Required to develop a bylaw and supporting rules and regs, and the intent is absolutely to include as much information in the rules and regs. As possible, so, cause it's easier obviously to go back, like you said, and amend that document versus, you know, trying to. Look for those, you know, minimum opportunities, you know, once or twice a year to to amend the bylaw.
Janice, and Chris, this is a question to Norm, I've got, the one section I looked at was like where it's got erosion control under appendixy. Is that something that the planning board should have an open conversation with the uh? Concon to make sure that, you know, there there's nothing they need to add, cause we're doing the rules and regs, but it affects them on how.
I was gonna say, are we stepping on their toe?
Yeah, that's always good, I dig, I don't I don't wanna walk on the other board, yes, we're doing the rules and regs, but. That's not our specialty enforcing erosion control, so I really want the Concon to say, looks good, guys, or here's what we need to add. So anyhow, that's it.
Well, do I have anything else with Janice?
Thanks for the headache.
Well, I was gonna say, I'm happy to, I'm happy to meet again, especially as you work your way through the rules and regs and have other questions, or feel free to. You know, through to Mika, I know she's been great, you can definitely send me questions, and I'm happy to kind of generate responses, or. You know, with a few other communities, we've had kind of like a smaller like working group meeting, um. You know, in between maybe public, you know, public planning board meetings, just to kind of advance these and. Get questions answered and work through language and stuff, so I'm available and just, yeah, happy to meet to help in any way that I can.
Thanks for your time, Joris.
Yep, thank you very much.
Joris, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess, Norm, I'd like to put this on, I know we have to talk about section five of November eleventh, but. We need to, we need to really delve into this and have a lot of comments by the next meeting.
Gonna be on our next agenda, absolutely. Okay, uh, next item, town planner job description.
Thank you, Chris.
Take care, Chris.
Okay. I'm gonna assume everybody has at least looked over the job descriptions.
Yep.
I have, but I gotta say, I think, is this how it would go up, I I feel like if I saw like a six-page job description, I would.
Job posting is totally different, and then they would refer to a link to the town website to view the whole job.
I was gonna say, I'd be so intimidated.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this it just seems goes on forever.
Yeah, yeah, but.
This is really not much change to the original job description from the market.
She actually, thi- this one that was done here was.
It's been.
Yeah.
It's been updated to master our law, you know, a lot of, so you know, and really defining what we actually do here in town, so.
Yeah.
It's been cleaned up.
I gotta give Austin and John a good heads up, they went through this with a fine tooth comb and cleaned it up here and a half ago. And so I, cause the one, the last one I saw was only a couple pages, I mean, it was it was good. But this one really goes in depth to make sure the town gets what they're asking for. I didn't, I I gotta tell you, Norm, I, this thing is is comprehensive. I I know last night there was some discussion with the select board about the community economic development function, but. Again, both planners that we've worked with have done that function. Yeah, I'm not saying it's fifty percent of their job, but um I know. Dave did it um when people came in and we made it a point to John. That he is the point man for anybody that's coming in and looking for the RDIC or any other properties in town. And then once he's sort of gone over, giving them a, I mean, he's walked people in properties. And then once that's, they're interested to go the next step, then they go to the town administrator and to um the select board.
I was never so ticked off in my life, lack of communication.
For.
John. When we walk through the doggone heights, for Christ's sake, you know, I I'm ticked off because we had an opportunity. If that was brought up earlier, maybe we could have had the freaking place mowed. We couldn't even get through half the place to show them anything. No, it. This next planner better have better communications, period.
I think one of the things that we identified at one point was. The ability to keep not only good records and and. Uh, from all the different projects that are coming on, but. I I hate to say it, the ability to tra- like have those records be transferred and read by somebody else. In the event, the likely event that they are here for like a year. Because although John did what seemed to be a great job with his survey and all the work that went into it. It kind of went off into the woods and died when he left, like there there's really hardly traces of it, we've been trying to find. Uh, the reports and all that stuff, and it's just, it's very difficult. Because one, we have a horrible track record with town planners and administrators, as far as getting one to stay for a while. That's gonna be really difficult, and I think we need to have sort of a backstop as as far as. Keeping good records, making sure, this is on us at one point, but make sure they have their computer is stays here. When they're gone and like we know how to use it and all that stuff, uh, but I I think. That ability to um have that organization, and also we talked about. Uh, inputting files, but that would probably be more of a assistant, hopefully, task to try and digitize what we have sitting around and stuff. I just, I really worry about the the turnover and and where that leaves us every time and.
Oh, it does, there's no doubt, a- and and you you know, significant community development does not happen in one or two years.
Correct.
You know, so.
Oh, it's definitely a marathon.
It it's uh. It's just, it's gonna be, it's just gonna be a tough thing, no no matter what, because I I can see, you know, the field that we're gonna have to pick from. Is doubtful at best, and uh.
Competitive, probably.
No, well, the problem is it won't be competitive, it'll be, it'll either be someone looking to retire or somebody uh. Brand spanking new, that that twenty-year experience in the field, i- it's like in the regular world industry, they don't exist. Trying to find somebody with five, ten, twenty years experience.
Yeah.
They're either at a place they're gonna stay or, so, I you know.
I hear what you mean, yeah.
I don't know, we'll see, you don't know until you put it out, is what's gonna, is the bottom line. And and I think the board, if if we get a couple of applicants and we do the the. Interview process and we don't think it's right, then don't pick, we'll put it, we'll have to put it out again, I.
I have to, I have to say, when we were looking for the interim planner, the selection process. Was haste, instantly done.
We don't, we shouldn't do that again on that.
And and I guess, you know, and again, I'm old fashioned, but uh, you know, for example, while we only had three people that even. Uh, submitted papers, and and one of them, we had an in in-person interview, and the other one, we had a Zoom interview. And granted, the the, I'm not gonna say anything necessarily about the candidate that 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 zoomed in. It isn't the same, it is not the same to have a Zoom interview as it is having that person sitting right in front of you. Uh, so when we get to this point, uh, that that's one of the things that at least I would push for, yes, no, we're not doing Zoom interviews. That's my own personal thing.
I don't disagree with you, you can read a person much better when they're sitting in front of you than on your computer.
Or better than that, when they're sitting with a group of the planners, and we're going around town, looking at various places. Because did John ever, you know, he might have gone to the subdivisions here, but he knew nothing about the rest of the town, you might say. And to me, for crying out loud, I want a planner that wants to get out there and. Get his hands dirty or her hands dirty. And uh, and really wanna know what this town is about.
If we could get another Delia, I mean, I'd I'd be over the moon, um, but it's it's hard to keep these people in this adverse environment, so I I think. Our pay has to be top-notch, uh, which is gonna be difficult to say the least. Um, but we have to field all candidates, cause I don't think we're gonna get a. A ton of them that we're honestly gonna be like, yes, this is, this is a great candidate, I think we're gonna. End up going, huh, I guess we can give this a shot, just cause like Tim said. Ev- anyone who's worth their salt is probably getting paid right now to stay around and. Getting them to come somewhere new, especially when we've had, was it three, four in the last six years, three, I think, it's. Anyone who does their research, which you'd hope they would, is gonna go, oh, red flag, let's talk.
Well, we're not gonna know until we get it out there, so that's the key, we just gotta get it.
Yeah, and hopefully you get someone who wants to be a part of a town, you know, cause if if. They're not really in it for that, then then, you know.
Yeah.
They would go into consulting and just work for engineer companies, so, but not that, not that that.
I don't.
Matter in this case, but some people, you know, it, I guess the word competitive comes to, there's a lot of different jobs these people are qualifying for too. So they don't just all take planning jobs, um.
Hey, we're gonna advertise it, maybe we'll get one.
Yeah.
I guess I, I don't know, do we need a motion to forward this to the?
I don't think so. Select board have already proved it.
Okay.
This is just you coming for any.
Yeah, I just, any final.
I think it's pretty, yeah, robust.
Does anybody see any significant changes?
And they didn't make any changes.
They made no changes.
If I remember, watch last night's meeting.
I think it's good that they put thirty-two hours, you know, cause that's the Monday through Thursday gig, I think that's fair.
So so.
That's what I gotta ask.
The way, the way I envision this is it works the Monday through Thursday, hundred percent town funded. If it ever gets into a situation where the hours of work because of a certain project. You know, we would ask that your, you would, the buy-in would be from you to offset some of those additional hours for a specific task. You know, because it may not be year-round work, it may just be, you know. We 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 got a big road acceptance project coming up, and we need a couple extra hours, and you know, so would that would be the only. Cause we we've gone back and forth the last several years of, you know, pushing back. From the administrator's office or from the finance committee that you kick in some money towards ours.
Yeah, and that's.
Yeah, and and I I think the town can support a thirty-two hour position without. Going back and forth, or a planner feeling that their, their jobs on the line every single year, and that's why they leave, is cause they just don't feel that.
The funding's there.
The funding's always gonna be, I I I think we can support this, I I I think, and then, because. The last two planners, well, Delia and and John, you worked remote on Friday. You could know, you couldn't prove that work was being done, and we're not set up for a f- a eight-hour day remote every single week. We don't have the computer network, we don't have town, you know, laptops that they can bring home, and they can, you know, back. We're not set up for that type of, you know, but if, again, if a project comes forward that you guys think needs additional hours, then, you know. We'd be looking for you to go go for it, you know, but that's it, so.
Yeah, the other thing, um, the question is now this, thirty-two hours, that's like a Monday through Thursday.
Correct.
But then what about meeting hours?
Meeting hours, so again, um, that can be flexed on um. The meeting week, they can leave at noon on Thursday, you know, something like that, so that, again, that can be negotiated, or they come in at noon on Tuesday. And stay late through your meeting, I mean, again, you know, we're willing to be flexible on that, I can buy that, yeah.
So that that was my point about the salary is that most salaries are based off forty-hour work week. If we're gonna do thirty-two, then. Again, I just put a number in there, ninety K is a lot of money for thirty-two dollars a week.
Again, it's it's driven by the market hourly rate, not the annual salary, so. And again, you may have a planner that, you know, works, you know, eight hours a week, like Coverston has an eight-hour week planner. And works in another community, you know, so could we steal him from the other community? You know, and share him with another town, I mean, those is some of the options that could be available as well. We won't go into, we'll find, we put it out there.
Of course, I haven't done the check, Norm, what came up as a discussion point, and I don't know. Um, I understand there's five positions in town that can have contracts, if I remember right.
Six.
Six, okay. I haven't done enough MGL work to see if.
This is not one of them.
Is that a hundred percent proven?
Absolutely true.
All right, I'm just gonna check, cause I I don't know why, um, yeah, okay, enough said. Cause with a contract, you have more, I know Alex, you talked about this, with a contract, you got more chance of keeping somebody for a while.
Yeah, but I mean, at least with it being thirty-two hours, ninety K, um, I mean, that's not crazy money. But it's it's enough to hopefully entice somebody who might be. Uh, you know, I I'm not looking for for somebody at the end of their career, but if if you're willing to give us five years at the end of your career, part-time. And and you wanna get paid, you know, forty-five bucks an hour for it, by all means, please, we are happy to have you. And I don't think you're gonna find any candidate for any experience with less than that, I I never heard any of our planners when they leave, when they left, be like. Ah, I'd hate, I hate to go, the money was so great, like I I don't, I don't think that. We're way above the market or anything like that.
Uh, I'd love to have Friday off, so, and get paid ninety K, so.
Do you get any feedback? Has anybody getting any feedback about Friday being nobody around at all?
Town office workers work.
There are staff there on Friday, we're just not open to the public.
Yeah, town office building is close to Pope on Friday, it's been like that for ten years, they're in the building working, so.
They're catching up essentially, or it's no phone, no phones and stuff like that, yeah, which they they.
That's been a ten-year policy.
I've had a few people.
Yeah.
Get, you know, very upset. But anyhow, all right, I'm, Norm, I'm fine, I don't have any changes, I, this is, like Alex said, this is a lot to digest.
It's robust, covers all the bases, well done.
So I guess the bottom line, get it out there. Oh, yeah, 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 well, I wanna get ready, see if they wanna add anything to it, yeah. Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Next item, scenic road bylaw violation, on Draymond Drive.
I think the stone wall that I see built. Is much better than what was there.
How so?
Square.
Are we putting a house on it, or is it a historic stone wall?
Well, if it's the same rocks, the same historic rocks.
Same rocks.
You don't think so?
No farmer moved a rock that big, no way, that's ex- and it's got excavator marks all over it.
Well, they did, they didn't move them by hand, I guess.
Farmers move big rocks.
I've got, I've got them out front of my house of uh where those were moved, and I'm not moving them.
Well, I know we had, we asked Mr. Clay to build a stone wall further down. On a scenic road, so does that new stone wall become historic because it now exists on the scenic road? I mean, I guess, where is the?
Me personally, Norm, I'd wanna find out what uh this crew over here has a comment about these pictures.
Well, yeah, that might be a good place to start.
Well, I'll I'll start by saying that uh we do have a quorum here in the historical commission, and uh we have called our meeting to order. Um, I think, Michelle, you have some comments, right? Do you wanna? Go ahead and.
Or did you wanna do it, I, either way, it's fine with me.
You kind of jotted it down, so if you wanna go ahead.
Sure.
I'll give the forty.
Okay, so uh, we did, we did go to the site, uh, we had a a meeting on Saturday where we went to the site. Um, I think what what we determined was that we are um good with the law. Good with the wall at this time, except that it should be extended more toward the edge of the driveway, it's. There's a big gap between the driveway and the wall, the wall, the wall should be closer to the driveway. We also think uh we it would be preferred to have about um fifty smaller rocks stacked in the wall to make it similar to the original structure. And we expect the fines to be paid in full. We also expect that in the future, the process of preapproval should be followed. Uh the structure should be approximately the same dimensions um as the the wall that was currently in place. And using as much of the original stone as possible, because you can't mimic like the stones that are there. One of the things that we noticed, we looked around, we were thinking about like measuring the wall to determine if it was like the same size and. And same dimensions. The walls on the road, because they're in different levels of. Kind of decomposition or, you know, over the years, the stones fall out, but they're there. So we couldn't really determine, like, all right, we have pictures of what the old wall looked like, right? And 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 it definitely had some smaller stones in there and it definitely um extended further, so we would, we would like that to be taken care of. Um but also in the future, conserving as many of the stones as possible to repli- rebuild it, basically take it down and then rebuild it. So that it's more in line with what was already there, if that makes sense.
I heard you say that the fines should be paid in full. Um at what date do you consider the obligation fulfilled? Uh so that the fines can stop, like at what, at what point will we consider? Uh this developer to be in compliance with the rules?
That's a good question, cuz it does need to be extended toward the driveway more.
It does need to be extended and to this point, he has essentially. Said that the rules don't apply to him and that, you know, he fixed it, let's just do away with everything, I know I didn't. Apply and go through the process that everyone else would have to do. So I personally think he's still in violation until everything is fixed to our satisfaction, I know I I don't think I'm gonna. Get that much agreeance, but.
No, that, I think that is true. And it's still, yeah, it still isn't to where it should be.
We haven't notified him at this point, that it is not.
Well, that was gonna be my next point is that. Is there any way to mark out where we want him to go and then notification of that process?
Leave room for snow drifts or, you know, for plowing snow.
I believe he was, was he notified that the wall was out of compliance by Delia, the. Wasn't there an email chain going back and forth between Delia and Clea discussing the wall and how he owed money for fines? And will continue to, so yeah.
She she assessed him a fine and he paid that fine.
Has the fine been paid? Uh I know, I know it was said that the fines would continue until it was closed out.
I was kinda surprised because Clea came up willingly and baited. Which is weird.
Sir, I I thought I heard there was supposed to be a plan that uh Mr. Blair was supposed to submit as far as repairing and. Uh restoring the stone wall.
According to the the law, the bylaw, yes, there is.
Has that been done and?
He he has supplied a picture of showing the wall.
That's this one we got here, Norm, from the packet?
Yeah. Which is not that easy to read, but.
Do you guys have access to this at all?
If you look at it very carefully, you can see where he is indicating the stone wall went to.
Basically goes up to the wetland buffer at fifty feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh yes.
And if I'm doing my math, it's about twenty feet shorter than driveway. I'm getting, it's a guesstimate, but I think it's about twenty feet.
Let's see. Yeah. And and I, I don't know, my my own personal feeling is, I do feel that, yes, it should be extended. There there, I don't think there's a need for that wide a gap.
Yeah, within five feet of the driveway, the, when it's gonna, maybe, so do you let him put the driveway in and then bring the rocks to it? You know, what's better for?
He he's showing, he's showing carefully enough, right on his plan exactly where that driveway is gonna be.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, it it should be build the driveway first. Build the rocks to it, or are you saying get the wall in and?
I mean, due to the the fines, I would say get the, get the wall in, if I were him.
At at least the gravel foundation for the driveway is already there.
Yes. Yes, it's clearly marked where the driveway is.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt about that. A- as as far as the actual state of the rock wall. I I guess I've got a few things, number one, the the stone walls along Brittenel Drive vary from virtually nothing. To some pretty substantial stone walls. But, you know. Can can you say this is even an average that you're looking for necessarily or not?
No, no, that's why we're saying in the future. That they should conserve, they should take the dimensions, conserve the rocks and try to put it back as close as possible to what was.
I think it is part of the permitting process, it's pictures and.
And so if it was done ahead of time properly, we would have had that all in place. So while we're not gonna try to go back and pick through where those rocks went, we're saying we'll accept it, but. In the future, we expect the rule to be followed.
Actually, I think some of those, some of the rocks that were in the stone wall were put down along the edge of the wetlands. I think s- some of those original rocks were put down along there. The the other thing that uh just. I guess I'll say it, but it bugs the heck out of me. But, you know, if you're looking for the quality of the stone wall, guess what? We have no bylaw that says someone cannot build a stone wall on a scenic road. Any homeowner, any person that owns a piece of land, if they wanna build a stone wall, they can build it in any way they want.
I've got a perfect example, I mean, I've got a neighbor.
Wait, hold, I'm a little confused as to how that that follows, cuz he destroyed, like, he could have, if there were no stone wall, he could have. Uh my house, if there's no stone wall, I I would assume I have to talk to the town, but apparently I don't, I could put that stone wall in. But I cannot destroy an existing historic stone wall and then put in what I want. I need to go ahead and document, come up with a plan that shows what it looked like before I took it apart, what it's going to look like afterwards. And then get approval after the final product of the people I submitted the permit to, that they are okay with what I've done. So I'm, I guess I'm. Like, yeah, if you could build a a wall, but that's not quite what we're talking about with what he had, he had done.
Well, well, I guess what what I'm kinda saying is, I I don't think we can really. Force anyone to recreate. A really exact semblance of an original wall.
I don't think that we are asking that, we are asking for them to use the rocks that were there. You can set the rocks aside and use those rocks, so do they have to go piece by piece? No, they don't have to number them and put them in the exact same order. But to use the rocks a- and try to try to replicate it is a reasonable expectation.
Uh I mean.
Well, yeah, build a, build a great wall, build a nice wall, you know, whether you run out of rocks, I can imagine. To based on just what kinda design you wanna do, there's that. My short comment would be like, if no one knows it's a scenic road, we should put a sign that says, you're on a scenic road. Bylaws apply, you know, so then no one just goes, well, I didn't know it was on.
We should put a big sign at the front of Brittenel that says scenic drive, don't litter, don't speed, stop throwing your trash out the window.
I I think, I think a developer would know if they're working on a scenic road or not.
But what about a homeowner? You know, like, just an average folk versus, you know, someone that that's.
Well, just 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 up the road from me, uh uh on Brittenel. Closer to Pama Gussa.
Just to generate.
We, someone who built a, I don't forget now who built the house, it might have been Blair that built the house. Uh and then the homeowners, after they moved in, they built a stone wall all across the front of their house. And they had, they had a stonemason come in, built a beautiful, beautiful wall. But they built it too close to the road, so in the winter time, when the plows came down, they kept knocking it off. The new owners came back in and they tore the the stone wall back down again.
That's what I'm saying, it could go around in a circle too.
And that's a perfect example, I mean. My property and then the one that's on Sassauana, which is a scenic road too, but I'm not going down that path. He came in and spent all the money to take all of those stones that were, I called the rock fence and beautiful. Had a, again, a stonemason come in and beautiful, beautiful wall, he go to the edge of my property and I left it the way it was, cuz I. I didn't see that as any advantage for me to have somebody come in, cuz it it did, I'm fine with the way it was, it's the way it was, farmers put it there back in the day. And I left it alone.
So, I I've, I was not part of anything at the beginning of this original discussion, so. The issue is that there is a process that he should have followed. To replace a an existing stone wall on a scenic road.
Take it down, begin with.
Any part of the stone wall.
So, he did not do that, did he fire, supposed to have a plan for what it would then look like? And that does not exist, that did not happen?
Should have applied, we would then have required.
What happened was.
And then, I just wanna, and then following approval of that plan, building of a stone wall, then there is some sort of approval of the stone wall as built. To the plan by us, by historical? Okay, and. None of that has happened. Okay.
And this has not happened a number of times.
Okay, and there are fines that are daily fines until it's, okay, so I guess what's the question? Should we be making him actually follow the process and pay the fines? I mean, I think yes, isn't that a pretty simple?
I I don't think we can impose any fine until we give him direction as to what compensatory action we are requiring him to take.
But the fine, the fine is, it it exists and starts when you destroy the the wall. So what happened was, I was walking my dogs and I saw that with a skitter, so the bulldozer part of the skitter, he had. Pushed the entire wall out of the way so that he could clear cut the property. I then brought that up to the board and we proceeded to to look into it, nothing would have ever happened. If somebody hadn't said something, he would have just gone about his way and hoped that nobody ever knew, and he never was held accountable. But instead, we found out about it and we started making a stink about it. And he at first told us to, I don't think his words were shove it, but um essentially. I'm not gonna follow what you guys are telling me to do, I don't respect you. And then we continued to push and now he has rebuilt the wall finally. And he wants us to take his product without us having any say in it and just say, here you go, I did it, goodbye, we're done. Without us saying, wait a second, this isn't what we were looking for, there's supposed to be a process here and a review, we're supposed to talk together, this isn't. You shove food in my mouth, this is we sit down and have a meal together and talk.
See, that's why.
Maybe you wanna add something?
Oh, Paul was at the door, I just waved at Paul, sorry.
And Norm, that's why I think based upon what the historical commission has come back and said, we want this extended within, I'm I'm gonna say five feet of the driveway. Send that email or document to uh Mr. Blair or the company saying. Yes, what you've got there is acceptable, but the historical commission would like that wall extended within five feet of your driveway. And we won't consider it complete until that's done.
Can give them a deadline to do it.
Yep, exactly, I think that's a fair.
Probably confirm that until it's done and approved, the fines will continue to accumulate.
Continue to stay in place.
At this point.
I think what's hard is due diligence, we didn't address it fast enough.
We couldn't address it cuz he never brought it before us, he didn't follow the process. I don't understand why we're trying to not hold him financially accountable for this, when he has made more money off the back of this town than any individual. And he refuses to take accountability for his actions, it's his MO.
We're getting, we're getting to it right now, so I mean. You know, I'm not gonna use the word, the agenda's been full, but if it could have been on the agenda a while ago, then should he pay because we didn't. Bring it to the table right away, should that be, you know, you can't be like, huh, you know.
It's all of a sudden that we are bringing this stuff up because he had another problem like this a long time ago at the beginning. And Craig Bacon had to go in there and fix the stone wall. And we never.
It's his job as a person taking down the wall to notify, to get the permission. So I think that, no, I.
We didn't put it on the agenda to have it addressed.
No, he's the one that's supposed to put it on the agenda to ask, not us put it on the agenda, not you put it on the agenda for him to. To ask, he's supposed to ask for permission, not.
Correct, and fill out the paperwork.
Right, so I think, yeah, it's.
I think to keep this process going and not stall it, we need to need to get a letter to him indicating what the historical commission has inspected it. Their requirements and then get a, get a, get a communication back. To me right now, yes, the money's important, but getting it done and and not dragging this thing through the winter is more important to me right now.
I wanna inventory, I wanna see the picture inventory of all the historic scenic roads we have in town.
Does every, does anybody have that?
I agree with you.
On on this specific, I'm sorry, to me, I just, I didn't hear that, he has been informed by Delia about, I just wasn't sure the specifics of. What he was informed about for fines and what.
So this was previously on the board's agenda, so this was a discussion, um and the board had received communication from the conservation commission and the historical. Commission, um the board had then directed Delia to send him notice of compensatory action. Which required him to fix the the stone wall, I think it was September first. To supply a plan and that there would be a per daily fee of three hundred dollars. He paid one fine of three hundred dollars and then it just hasn't come back up on the agenda until now, when Norm requested it be put on.
Okay.
So I guess to clarify, this is not the first discussion that's been had and Mr. Blair has been notified and communicated with in writing.
A- and in that communication, he was told what he should do to resolve this?
Correct, with the deadline.
Been done.
I'm not, I'm not sure of that.
I, we, if somebody had, can look up the planning board packet, I believe the letter was included in a recent planning board packet, but I'm. I'm fairly certain that the deadline was September first, that the the wall was supposed to have been completed. Somewhere in and around that time, I remember the board went back and forth on a date and you did decide on a date and that's what Delia included in the letter.
What date do you think it was?
I would look in like maybe the late August packet.
And um were there, I'm sorry, in in that, again, I'm, I didn't see that, cuz I don't think I was here at that point. Was it described what what done would entail and then what action would happen to sort of review? And and consider it complete?
He kinda put the wall together.
I don't remember, to be honest, I know that Delia presented the letter as an example to the board and the board okayed the language that was in it. And then the following day, she sent it to Mr. Blair, I don't remember, uh Michelle Lauren was just asking if the letter had described. What he was supposed to do specifically to restore the wall, I don't remember, I just remember a deadline.
From Delia?
Yes.
I don't know either.
Okay.
Um I think that they were asking us what needed, like, if it was a, were we asked what? If it was what we expected, I'm not sure how that all came about.
Can you repeat that question again?
Well, no, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to wrap my head around the timeline, so in August at some point, Delia sent him a letter saying, you need to. Complete this or whatever the language was, by September first.
Yes.
Or else there will be daily fines following that for every day that it's not completed, I'm just wondering if. Complete was sort of defined in what was transmitted.
I'm not the best at finding these, but I I remember that the. The actual wording from the bylaw was sent, letting him know that he needed to come up with a plan, submit the plan. Execute the plan, come back with pictures of what was done, get approval for that and then everything would stop. And he is, he was fully aware of the fines, I remember he had a snarky comment for Delia about. How much she wanted and whether she wanted a blank check, like, he he knew the fines were coming and knew that they were accumulating.
And what I'm getting at right now is I would since the historical commission has done their inspection. Give the feedback to the planning board of what they want to finish it, I want that letter to get out to him to say, get it done. And put a date on it. And once that's completed and to your satisfaction, then we can go into the money side of it, I just wanna get it done. Because this can drag on for months.
And I agree that that should go out to him, but I just think it seems like maybe a good practice to say, and by the way. We're reiterating to you.
Yes.
That fines are racking up, this is what we asked you to do, this is not what's been done, this is what the fines are, this is where we are now. And this is what you need to do to make it right and let us know when you've done that and the ticker keeps going until that point, I mean.
The board was included on an email um from Delia to Mister Blair that was dated September thirtieth. She said, I'm following up on the letter sent on August fourteenth. In order to establish all required compensatory actions, a written narrative of the scope of work and drawings of the proposed work that impacts the scenic wall are required. The timeline for completion of the above was September first. It shall be a violation of the bylaw to fail to perform timely the required compensatory action. Subject to a fine of three hundred dollars for each week the violation exists. He wrote back and said, on September thirtieth, I already paid a fine of three hundred dollars, the wall has been restored and in my opinion is better than it was before. Can we just call this satisfied, if not, a picture would suffice. And and that was sent to all the board members.
Thank you, that's what we're looking for.
Was there any? That was the last communication.
So Delia replied to him and said, Mister Blair, the letter outlines what the expectations are. Town board commission members have followed up with me on the status and expressed an interest in seeing the wall repaired correctly. She emailed that to him on October first.
Yeah, so if he.
I mean, it seems pretty clear to me that he knew what he was supposed to be.
I'm saying it doesn't sound like follow up has happened since then.
Okay.
But should the follow up not be coming from him?
There there are two parts to the fine. The scenic road bylaw. There's one part. Which deals with a violation of the of the scenic road bylaw. And a separate fine that deals with failure to complete compensatory action. I don't believe Cle was ever given a clear definition of what that compensatory action had to be.
I mean, I I think Cle has, you know, his own lawyer and can ask for clarification if he wanted to. I don't think that it's for us to litigate him out of these fines. I just don't. If he wants to fight with the town over the three hundred dollars a day he's accruing.
A week. Thought it's not a week.
A week, a day, a week.
I thought I heard somebody say a day, I thought it was a week.
But again, I I think we all wanna get to an end game of it done right. I know the historical commission wants that, so let's get to that end game and agree, I I I'm fine without sending a letter to him. And and if part of that letter is, you know, we want it within five feet and there's still um calculated compensatory damages that have to be assessed. I'm fine, but we need to define those and that's where I'm struggling with what that definition is.
You know, I I'll agree, I'll agree with you and personally. Uh the the idea of uh the law should go to within five feet of the driveway, I think it should be uh a. Condition from both the planning board and historical.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was getting at, so I don't have a problem having a. That's what I'm looking for, complete letter from both?
Consensus.
Consensus, yeah.
From both boards.
Do we need each take a vote on that? I'm fine for putting a motion to send a letter to um Blair Development indicating that the planning board. In consultation with the historical commission would like to see. The stone wall as in place now be extended within five feet of the driveway from on lot nine R. And that will be considered a complete uh restoration of the wall.
Plus the stones, the additional stones.
Fifty additional stones, smaller stones in the. I'm struggling with that one.
Yeah, ask with the uh what the deadline is, you mentioned you wanna set a deadline.
Yeah, I haven't got, I was trying to think to be, what to put a deadline on, uh me personally. It's, I would say November thirtieth, given a month to get that taken care of. I mean, I. Yeah, I would say two weeks. Yeah, I'm. That, I'm I'm fine with that, two weeks from receipt of the letter. I'll 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 defer to the board of how they wanna me add that to my motion if it's two weeks.
Yeah, I think two weeks is is.
From receipt of plenty of time.
I mean, he he's always in here telling us how quickly he can cross eighteen things off of a punch list to try and squeeze the street in and for acceptance, so. I would think fifty rocks in a in a stone wall extension is a, you know, morning before the cup of coffee for him.
I mean, I'm fine with two weeks from receipt of letter, I'm I'm okay with that, anything below that is just to me from a building perspective, you're sort of. Two weeks, I'm fine with it, maybe a month was too much, I'm fine.
If it's done sooner, he can, he can submit all of his stuff and yeah.
We, yeah, we need the paperwork to be complete, is that true? He's gotta submit his stuff Delia asked for originally in that email, that's like.
Well, my my question is if I may, would you like a revised restoration plan to show the new location of the extended wall?
Well, I was gonna, that was I was gonna add to, to make a good point is that um updated uh nine hour plot plan and showing the final. Wall um location and where it is. As part of my motion.
Right, because historic should have a copy of that, so in the future.
Yeah. That's it, and again, I added in the two weeks from receipt of letter.
If I may, are we including the fifty stones piece?
That's what I'm struggling with, I haven't added that in there yet cuz.
Come on, make.
Tell me, my friend, what is your holdup?
I mean, I'm looking at that wall, it's better than any other stone wall in the, on the freaking scenic road.
But that's, that's like saying that like, you know, this beautiful new modern house is better than. Than something down on Plymouth Rock, like maybe from one aspect, but this is a historic wall. It's not that we're building, you know, some monstrosity on top of it and he did not follow. What would have been, he didn't follow the process, he didn't ask any of us, he didn't talk to historical and see what they would want. If he had, we wouldn't been in be in this situation, they're asking for fifty small stones. And and I don't think at all that that is an overstep in any way, he wants to get out from this without having to change it at all and I think. That's a a quick way to say, hey. This will make it look better, we're not gonna make you tear the whole thing down and rebuild it by hand, we are trying to meet you in the middle here.
Rest of the board good with that cuz I'll add it in my motion.
Did you still use historically stones?
Yeah.
Like approximately, like if if they were kinda random, like we just picked a number to to randomly throw in there like.
Approximately fifty uh historic stones to be added on top of the.
I don't think it has to be historic, like I think, but but smaller, just to keep in.
Just to fill in all the gaps.
Yeah.
Where it looks kinda similar.
Stones to the existing wall and future five foot wall.
Extension should be similar.
Similar, yep, okay, I'm fine with that.
That's a pretty.
And and as far as the, and as far as the, um. No, that's fine, I just, Michelle, can I ask for clarification, um just for the sake of the letter? The stones, are you looking for them to kinda just be like randomly interspersed in that, okay, got it, thank you.
To kinda fill it in, just there's some.
Five to ten inch stones randomly scattered throughout the wall that number close to fifty.
That's my motion.
You got that to me?
I, but I hope so.
And also I want the historic commission to build five feet of that stone wall, not that one, but. An a stone wall, so they'll have an idea what is up to to build a stone wall.
What does that have to do with them and their committee, I've built plenty, but I'm not on the.
They want historic stone wall, try to build one.
Do you build developments, we're on the planning board?
I'm saying a stone wall, it's a joke for Christ sakes.
I I have a suggestion, I I know you still have a motion there, but did you want it to include the fines? I'm not getting into the fines, I want it fixed, I'll I'll let the, I'll let the board worry about the fines and the co- compensatory after that. I just wanna get it built, you guys get it approved, then we'll deal with the money.
Got it.
Cuz eh trying to, trying to do two things at once, I think we're we're putting ourselves in a situation of not getting it done.
Okay.
And I I I'll defer to you guys, but I think the ultimate goal is getting it repaired. The the money's coming in, yes, I do agree that the fine should be paid, I a hundred percent agree with that. I just don't know how much and when is where where I'm struggling with right now.
All right, so let's finish that motion cuz then I have a thought about it.
So, okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion, this is uh, okay, this motion is from the planning board.
I personally think that the the fines and the. The accrue man of them and when that stops has all been laid out in black and white. It it, I have photographic evidence, it starts on July first and runs through him getting it approved by the historical commission. Like that's, that's black and white and I think if we push it off, he's gonna find a way to not pay us. I I don't see a pattern of behavior with him where he just goes, hey, yeah, I'll pay the fine, sure, no problem, no fight here. I'll own up to my end, I think it's, it's gonna be a very difficult battle.
I don't see a downside to including additional information in the letter about what the fine has been and what it will continue to be, I mean. I feel like more clarity in one package is perhaps uh. The best possibility for this, that it's not an email from September, a different request from here, like a letter that says. Here's the situation, here's what we want, here's what's happened so far, here's what we want you to do, when we want you to do it by.
I think that's pretty much exactly what was said in the last letter from from Delia to him.
Thing is, we wanna get a letter out to him.
I don't have a problem putting as as Norm, I don't have a problem to what Lauren said of of putting in. The the last paragraph of compensatory damages are continuing to accrue until this is finished and approved by the.
I don't want him to say, well, you didn't tell me in the letter what the what the repercussions were gonna be, you know, I just.
I just, I don't think, I don't think we have the information to outline exactly what the.
That's why I wasn't putting any number in there, I just was saying.
Putting in a note in the letter.
Yes.
That uh, yeah.
That compensatory damages are gonna continue to accrue until this is uh finalized by the historical commission. I'm fine with that, adding it in as a paragraph, last paragraph. Which is what Delia did in the, I think to me, if I read that letter right, that's what she did in the last part of the paragraph. Um in her previous letter.
She told him it would be three hundred dollars a week.
Yes.
I think to add to it, just to. Pissing on the cake, whether it helps or not, um say, we're gonna send you a bill, you know. It's coming, whether, you know, it can be long format like we've been talking, but just, you know, we're not just gonna say. Hey, you're racking up fees, like someday you're gonna get a letter that says this is the amount, just so you know. And then, and then if he wants to pay it right away or fight it, I don't know what he's gonna do, but just so he knows. The bill's coming in a separate invoice, you know.
Well, I think that last paragraph is saying compensatory damages are continuing to accrue, will solve that issue.
Okay, as long as that.
Ask the board how we come to that number, who's going to, who decides that, so that we can communicate that, how do you calculate that?
I can provide photographic evidence of the date when it was the Monday that it was destroyed, cuz I have the photo from a Sunday, I believe, so I can provide the start date. As far as the finish, I think that, I don't wanna put this on you guys, but I I've, I thought from the law that was determined by. The historical commission, society, commission, commission.
He should tell us though when he's finished, so we know what to go out and look at.
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
I don't know if we came to a conclusion for you there.
I don't think we have an, I don't.
So if I may, it sounds like the three hundred dollar fine that he paid addresses the fine for violating the initial bylaw. It sounds like he still owes a fine of three hundred dollars a week from July first when the photo was taken until he contacts the historical commission to say that the wall is complete. Is that a fair?
Yeah.
Statement, I don't know how else you would calculate it, because that's what the spiral says.
I would wanna look into it and make sure that there wasn't a requirement from the bylaw indicating that. We had to indicate not just any developer, that there is a uh fine gonna be imposed. I agree that when it tore down, that's when you violated it, but I wanna make sure that we're covered, that there's no. That's what I'm looking for. That there's no requirement from the town to indicate that that you're getting a fine, that's what I'm getting at, I just wanna make sure.
I believe Delia did indicate in her email that he was and would continue to be fined on a weekly basis going forward, so I think that basis.
Good enough for me.
Start date there.
How does it read?
It's in your email.
I think that by next one, our next agenda with the same bylaw, bylaw in front of us.
Correct, I I I really would like the the next meeting that be like Norm said, an agenda item, so we can set the number and send him a second letter. Hoping that it's because in two weeks, it'll be finished in two weeks. And then we can say, okay, now it's done, there's the end date and here's the fee that goes with it, the, I should say fee, the fine that goes with it. And issue that letter as a second letter after completion of what the fines will be for the timeframe it took. And then if if the applicant says no, and that's another issue that we'll get into, but I don't wanna get too ahead, I I think the next meeting we should define. Timeframe and cost. But I want, I ultimately, and I I think the historical commission said, we want it done, we want it restored. And yes, we'll get the money or we'll attempt to get the money, but let's get it done.
Also don't want it to happen again.
Yeah, I think more importantly, don't want it to happen.
It's happened all up Sassuwanna and Palmagus, I'm sorry Sassuwanna and Brittenell cuz. Sassuwanna is, I mean, I've seen houses built there and the walls just disappear.
Well, that's why this.
Worth why I said, there's the photos, so you have history that you can go and check.
Anyhow. As part of his application process to get permission to do it. That's what should, any developer should submit photos on a historic road of what the, what the. Predecessor and then successor looks like of it, that didn't have, I honestly, in the seventeen years, I've never seen this ever done. I'm not saying it's wrong, right or indifferent, it's wrong is what it should be, but I've never seen it done. And that's on any historic, and I think we've got a couple other historical roads that out, that subdivisions, I shouldn't say subdivision, A and Rs have been built on.
All I know is the process was done from my own driveway. It was a public hearing.
Hey, all right, see?
Was Ridge Road classified as scenic?
I don't remember.
Is is which?
Ridge Road, I don't think Ridge is a scenic. Yeah.
We should adopt some more scenic roads.
The reason why I say because of.
Tried that, didn't work. No.
Anyhow, that's.
Okay, we have a motion.
For clarification, I'm sorry, so are we including any language in the letter about fines or no?
Yes. No, the last paragraph, eh eh what I put in eh the is that we should put a paragraph similar to what Delia had that. Compensatory fines are still accruing.
Okay.
Until um this, the historical commission has approved the the final, this, the final um wall.
Not just historical.
Historical planning board, sorry. Sorry, you're right, it's the both of us.
Can somehow allow for correspondence back to to them, I think it's already in there, but just so someone's.
Well, I put that in there that an updated drawing of nine R is required. Of the nine R property showing that where the new wall is finalized. And if you want to, I'll a- amend the uh motion to include pictures.
And photographs.
And photographs. Okay, good enough. To me, give, I made it as complicated as possible to write this letter.
Just don't ask me to repeat it back.
No, I'm not, I really am not.
One minute, one second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those the.
I gotta say, come out real quick.
I don't know if we have to, cuz is is, is it the planning, we have to?
I don't think we have to.
I don't think we do, is it on you guys to?
It is.
Assess it, right?
Eh eh as near, as near as I know, eh you know, we are required to uh request input from the historical commission, but I think that's about it.
As soon as we get the letter, I think it'd be advantageous us just to inform the chairman. Let him know that uh it's completed, at your convenience, please get out and take a look.
Yes.
I think that's a fair.
Yeah.
I think so too.
If we want, we can make a motion to approve, about to uh approve or agree.
Support.
Support.
A motion, yeah.
If we want, I'll entertain it if you want it.
I'll make a motion to support what the planning board's decision.
Okay.
In this matter, is that what you're looking for?
Sure. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, ten seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm so carried.
Freeze off the, off the docket.
Hey, we have two boards in this town that are on the same page.
Hey, and we communicated. Let's just get that out there to the public. We had two boards communicating and working together.
We did, that's what it's all about.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Norm. Thanks.
And it's coming up on a future agenda to
Yeah, they
Cuz I have a question about, right, how do we make sure that it doesn't happen again?
That is very important.
It's almost impossible it could.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The only, Norm, the only thing I could think of is, I don't remember the name of that checklist for the building. Somehow that needs to be on that checklist, that, you know, the building inspector has.
Yes.
If if it's a scenic road, check yes or no. If yes, please check with planning board and historical commission if there's anything that, any permitting that needs to be done. That's my opinion. I don't know how to get that to happen, but that's what should happen.
Doesn't have to go into that E thing?
That E, that's what I was trying to get. To me, help me, what's the name of that thing?
Viewpoint.
Oh, viewpoint. Needs to go into the viewpoint part of the checklist, and maybe that's a discussion with the building inspector of how we get that in there for the five historic roads in Robin, is it five or six?
Six.
Six. I remember the number somewhere in that, but that should be in there for those, so and again, most of them are built up, but if um Brittenell's still being built up, there is room on Sassauana for building, if I'm not mistaken, down the way too, so.
Intervale is a
Okay.
Intervale as well.
If that's my suggestion of how probably we should handle it in the future.
And would that be on you to do that or us to do that?
It'd probably be just a conversation with the building inspector on how to do it. I don't know. If we had a planner, we would put this, delegate this to our planner, but we don't, so.
You know, I was, that's why I made the comment of having a sign on your road that says you're on a scenic road. I know it would be tough to just have a nice sign and then say
Restrictions apply.
You're being watched, you know. But essentially It's not gonna know really what they're being, the jurisdiction that
We've never done that, but I I mean, it's not a bad idea to put Rull in a scenic road, but somebody would have to upkeep the signs and
Yeah, I don't know how to
If Chris was here, I'd look at him, so when are you putting that sign up?
Yeah.
And he'd look at me and go, yeah, come with me.
Do they have a printer or they just order them?
Oh, no, they have to be ordered. They've gotta be specific. Yeah, yeah, have to be.
They're not cheap.
Yeah.
They go on aluminum.
Yeah. I mean, I mean
No, not gonna happen.
But um, I'm just saying, yeah, if you can ask for a sign, but yeah, how does it get
No, but if it's on the application.
That's where, that's where it gets caught, Michelle, is if it's on the application. Because
It's about the only way we could.
Yeah, cuz that's always gonna get caught is when somebody's applying for, say, they wanna build a house on Brittenell. When the application comes up, do you have the permit for the scenic road? Do you have any historic monuments, walls, anything out front that needs to be verified, or if you're gonna move them?
This this is to me, this is one of these things like, you know, it's it's no different from no more than two unregistered vehicles in the yard.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, do we enforce it? No, you can't. We don't have people to do it.
Actually, I will answer that question after talking to our illustrious police chief, that there is enforcement being done on some of those issues. There is. He has two or three that are being enforced as we speak.
Hmm, interesting.
Of excess vehicles in a property that they're handling. He didn't wanna give me the details, and I didn't wanna ask for them. I just wanna ask if it was being handled, and he said yes. He said, but most of the time, and this is everybody in in town, that typically there's no action or anything done until a complaint is issued to the police department or it's issued to a building inspector, then gives it to the police department to enforce. So that's how it happens, but there are two or three that actually are being done. The chief told me, so.
Okay, we done with this one, I think?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Next agenda item is uh street acceptance.
Oh, do you guys need to formally close your meetings?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn for the historical commission. Let moves.
I'll second it.
Michelle seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay if you want, you don't have to leave.
That's okay. I'm just, I'm just typing the minutes, it's eight oh four. Thank you.
Number four.
Okay, street acceptance, recommend the sales outcome of the street acceptance request on the town meeting warrant.
I don't even, it's best not to ask me any questions.
Well, does the citizen petition come in yet? Ditto that.
Been denied.
A citizen petition?
Been denied.
Really?
Wasn't on the proper paperwork.
It was an interesting select board meeting last night.
Yes.
Very interesting.
Yes. So, this is my take, and I'll put this through the chairman. I, as a planning board member, are frustrated that we spent three, three and a half hours trying to make sure all our I's and T's were crossed and dotted with those roads.
How many dollar bills?
And tree costs, making sure that there were conditions put together that Mr. Kloski had to oblige by Friday. And my understanding, again, I haven't seen it, but Norm said, we got a letter from Mr. Kloski on it was Thursday or Friday, indicating that all conditions, as we requested, were satisfied. And then Monday, the select board went into basically, and I apologize for my phrasing, but in our sandbox, asking questions that we already spent three and a half hours or three hours on, and then denying three of the four roads. And what I was gonna ask the board for on this topic is, I would like to see from the select board, like we have to, the reasons why they were denied. I mean, we typically, if we deny something, we have to come up with, I apologize, I don't remember the terminology. The reason, I call it reasons, but it was, there's another word for it. Um, that some
Deficiencies.
Deficiencies or reason, reason why it was denied. We didn't get that. Um, and I would request that we send a letter to the select board asking why three of the roads were denied. Um, specific reasons. Because maybe we made some mistakes. I'm not saying we're perfect, but I'd sure like to know, while we spent our time doing a recommendation and making sure everything was painted in the right box, and then for the select board, basically say, no, they didn't do it right. It's not, we're not putting it on the warrant. Part of my other issue with that was, is that I believe that the town should be the deciding factor on those roads, not five members. That's my opinion. Nobody else's. The planning board was asked for a recommendation, we gave it. Um, the roads was in our purview, if they were satisfied, and um if there was anything mistaken about that, I felt the select board, if they thought there was gonna be some question or anything, should have communicated through the chairman that there would be a requirement for us to be at that meeting, or someone either asked questions. I understand, to me, you can tell me if I'm wrong, none of those emails or requests went out. Then, uh again, I'm I'm frustrated, so that's it, that's all I got to say.
I mean, I wish I'd gone, honestly, I I just couldn't with the kids and everything, but I I, if their frustration was in any way related to all the issues surrounding these roads, and then the rushed manner in which the punch lists were tackled, and even at the end, uh when we put on all those conditions, it wasn't done by that meeting. It, we were giving him another three or four days to get it done by the end of the week, like it it was so rushed, I personally feel like if I were them, I wouldn't have wanted any part of it, especially with the the issues going on in in and surrounding a lot of these roads. I can't speak to to what they wanted, but I I did hear a little bit of it, and I I thought there were issues with documentation from our uh like conditions and stuff, that they weren't aware of those, if I'm correct.
Well, there were, uh well, I was just reading their, the minutes today from the well, this was from
Monday.
The twentieth.
Yes, the twentieth was the hearing.
Yeah, and there were a couple things that I actually was just wondering about the granite things. And, you know, there was no like formal waiver that we gave for not having the granite headers on catch basins. I'm just wondering, like, it seems like there's some sort of like official documentation, I'm not even sure what to call them, things, that I thought we were clear about, but perhaps there are some more formal things they were expecting. I mean, we had a letter from the DPW saying we don't want them, and so we said, okay, like, we don't have to do that. Like, I'm not sure what kind of a formal waiver process. It just seemed like I don't know, at least from the minutes, a lot of their issues were things that we had talked about, and maybe just sort of formally type items. I don't know. Should we have issued a formal waiver for each road that said you don't have to have granite headers, or whatever they're called?
Yeah, I I watched the meeting, when it finally hit uh YouTube, I watched the meeting that day it hit YouTube. I watched it today on my drive, or listened to it on my drive home. Um, you kinda had it right, and I'm not gonna try to perfectly announce what the select board was doing during the entire meeting, it's pretty tough. Um, but again, they asked for a recommendation for the road. We recommended it, and I'm not saying they didn't watch our meeting, but we did recommend it. We gave conditions on the recommendations. Um, but one thing they didn't, they were expecting was a letter saying why we were recommending a road, which we didn't, we just went ahead with a vote. Um, that's something I noticed, which I think you guys just kinda brought up. And then they said our motions essentially Jen mentioned that we didn't amend the conditions of the subdivision for all the changes, for example, trees, so they didn't feel that anything, even though we made motions to recommend with conditions, that those weren't
Done properly?
Well, they weren't amendments to the subdivisions, so that they're, they don't feel that they were gonna be held accountable. Say, when springtime comes, say he doesn't plant any of the trees. Well, there's no I guess they're they're saying, well, you did make motions, but they weren't attached to the document for the plot of land. So they felt that those were reasons, some of reasons, some of the reasons were, and I'm, I'd like to hear what everyone says. If the motions we made are seeing us serious enough, or or if they weren't. They need to be attached to to the subdivision, which we, was already approved. You know, a long time ago, I don't know if we were
Not necessarily.
Prepared to do that. Um, and we weren't told that we needed to do that either. We were originally just told to do recommendations, so, you know, in the end, uh uh did we miss the mark? I mean, we 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 did what we were asked of, I guess, to 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 a certain spectrum, I guess, um.
Keith, that was, that was my whole pro, uh my whole issue is that we were asked for a recommendation, we weren't asked for a recommendation with a legal brief with it. If we were asked for that, then I'm fine. We weren't asked for that, and legitimately, the board can tell me if I'm wrong. Three of those four roads weren't part of the um approval process. Lindsay was the only one that was part of the quote new
New road policy.
New road policy. So the other three, we did give acceptances on, but legitimately, we didn't have to, because it should've just gone to the warrant, be put on it, and then during the town meeting, the the uh um moderator would ask if the planning board approved, disapproved, or had took no action on those warrant articles.
Right.
Um, Lindsay was the only one that was under the new acceptance, or if you wanna call it procedure, so again, I I maybe there should've been more on there, but it wasn't asked, and so call me silly, I'm not a mind reader. I don't know what, and if there was ex- expectation going in that meeting, that there was gonna be some questions. And if I'm not mistaken, to me, that letter from Chris Kloski was in their package of of approval of all of the points. Am I wrong in that?
No, you're correct.
Okay, so they had that saying that everything was was I I I get what Alex is saying, it was last minute. I do agree, it's been frustrating with me i- in this one, but it was completed. And Chris was was satisfied, so I'm struggling with what happened. And I'm more struggling for the citizens, because the the snow plowing, okay, whatever, it's a season. But what the real fact is, is every one of those people that own a house in there, their children are going to have to walk from wherever they live on those three roads to the end, because the school buses will not be coming in on private roads.
They've already been doing that since they moved in.
That
It's been going on for, that's been, and they knew that that was the deal, when they when they built the houses, and they knew that was the deal when they were buying them.
And I think if, if we're being honest, I mean, we're we're trying to shift blame between the select board and the planning board.
Right.
But I I think there's uh, there's a little bit of an elephant in the room, whose name is Cleve, sorry, Claire, Cleve Blair. Um, and and his general demeanor of, if you don't do this, I'm not gonna plow, I'm gonna leave them out in the cold, do this for the kids because you should, and then I'm also gonna leave those same kids out in the cold and not plow for them. It's this pattern of intimidation that if the select board were to be human and say, I don't, wh- what is this guy hiding? I don't want any part of this. He's trying to push this thing on me, and he's threatening me if I don't do it. I don't blame that all, them at all, for saying, no, I'm not putting this on, you're you're trying to bully me into this. I mean, I I think he holds a lot of blame himself for the way that he conducts himself, his business practices, and and how he interacts with the general town officials and and paid employees of the town.
I I I don't disagree with with the demeanor, I'm not gonna argue with that point, but from a subdivision regulations and legal standpoint, we were there to verify that the road was built. All the conditions were satisfied, and it could go to the town for a vote. If the town chooses that, to your point, Alex, that this is not something they want, then the town can say no. But the not to give, the this, I'm just frustrated that, again, the power's been taken away from the town in town meeting to make that decision. There's where my frustration lies.
But it's because he didn't meet the deadline.
Well, I agree.
He did based on our recommendation, what we put, we put a recommendation together, and we gave dates. If on Friday, those those weren't done, and the letter wasn't Chris, wasn't um let me stop this, let me get my thoughts together. If those requirements per our recommendation weren't satisfied on Friday, we were giving a non-recommendation to the select board on Monday, if those conditions weren't met. That was part of our written approval process, or our exa- our recommendation to the select board.
And th- they had a letter from the seventeenth from the DPW director saying that that those issues had been resolved.
Correct.
Um, I I mean, this is not for this exactly, but I think, I think one thing that we need to do is be clear with the select board in what they are expecting of us, and perhaps have a policy that when we have public hearings about road acceptance, at least one or more members of the planning board has to be there, you know, just as a policy for ourselves. Um, but I think, I I think talking to them about what what they are expecting from us, like, I I just think, I think we need to have a discussion with them around what the documentation is and what it means, because yeah, you're right, they they spend a lot of time going over things that we had gone over. It was like, oh, you got this letter. It's like, oh, at the end of the discussion, though, like, this is what we had already talked about, so I just think we need to figure out a process to have this not be like this again, which I think should include conversations with the select board and attendance at any road public hearings.
My only short comment, or I got a lot of comments, probably go for four minutes. Um, but one side one is, is if 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 the select board's allowed to deny a road, and we approve it, then it it sits with them. I know it upsets us, I know it makes us feel like we didn't not upset, but we, you know, like, well, what did we miss? Like, what's going on here? Um but it gets to be their way of, um I don't wanna just say hang in your hat, but it it's not on us, you know, we should to a degree, even though we're, you know, we have our opinions on it, it every complaint shouldn't come to us, at least, you know, unless we really did something wrong, and I don't think we did, we went um out of the way, you know, to accept these roads. Um, there were, you know, if to to roll back, they and went watching it, and I think even Alex, Alex was pretty honest, Alex Moat was pretty honest about his opinions of certain things. Um, you know, to just help with their discussion, but um you know, if they're not gonna accept it now, are they gonna, when are they gonna accept it? That was kinda what I was getting
Has to be resubmitted.
Will resubmit, but like, well, so what says?
What what needs to happen for them to accept it the next time?
You know, if he just goes, here's the paperwork, and goes like, like this, he's just gonna say, well, you're not gonna you know, I already did the work, we can review it again, but what what's gonna change? And and and, yeah.
Thank you, funding room? Um, just because I was at the meeting, a couple of clarifications
Just because I was at the meeting, a couple of clarifications, um, their biggest concern on Arrowhead Way was that. The planning board had received the consulting report from Turner, but had not provided a reason why you were not taking, choosing to take action. And so in their interpretation of reading the report, they still felt that there was concerns with the roadway. Which could lead to liability that they didn't want the town to take on, so that was, that was their biggest concern with Arrowhead. Um, their concern with Woodside was um. Something that actually DPW Director Kloski included in his memo was that he was not in support of accepting the face roads. Um, in the way that they were, um, in the fact that the construction vehicles were gonna be passing over a town road. To finish the middle of a private section, so it was gonna go town, private, town. Um, and then in turn, because they did not wanna do Woodside, they did not accept Pioneer because you couldn't pass over the private road to get to a town road. Um, so those were just some additional comments that were made at Monday's meeting.
Yeah, it was, I mean, and they were. It almost goes back to, I think we gotta. Type, and like you said, how do you not have it happen again? It's like subdivision rules and regs, you know, I've.
But it was the phases were correct.
Yeah, yeah, uh, well.
Delia did point out at a meeting to the board that he did not do the phases in the order that they were approved in.
Last phase four was supposed to be the, with the companies.
You know, and with Arrowhead, I think, I think we did talk about it, and it's, it's tough, I'm not saying they didn't watch the meeting, but. I mean, if they, if.
Well, Keith, if I can clarify, the meeting was never posted. So your meeting wasn't posted, so they had nothing to go off.
And I gotta say, I I performed a shortfall, and I still am, I haven't even submitted minutes. Um, for that, and that's my fault, I kinda wondered like, man, did they not, could they have used the document I was supposed to produce um in time? Or or on schedule, if you will, um, so I feel bad about that, and um, well, Arrowhead, it's like, uh, you know. We, it it kinda jumped back and forth, we talked about the road being um. Analyze, but the ro- really, we talked about erosion which happened, and so it kinda, it it went somewhere, but didn't go enough, and they're nervous. That without any fulfillment of. You know, the second part of the report, it sounds like they're they're, would they accept in the spring, I, you know, especially. Since we're not gonna be actually following through on that. You know, we're not drilling the road, we're not trying to see if if water's seeping in somewhere. You know, I, even though we didn't give a formal. Formal um paperwork on it, it, yeah, it's it's. It's that one's tough, uh, the phased approach, yeah, that's a. In-depth conversation that either has to be updated, cuz if they're just gonna, if they're gonna hold true to that, and we kinda are. Wondering about it, like, what's the right approach to to building a road, paving a road? Building houses around it, you know, even even for me, just a simple way to, and I know I'm talking a lot, but uh, the street trees, for example. And he's like, oh, you know, the neighbors don't want them, people go on, go on their property, they don't want them, well. We should, obviously, we should be putting in these trees before anyone buys a house. Then there's no talk about, it's on my property or not, and that would be something you've gotta clarify with him, like, let's not put trees at the very end. Put them in the beginning, so they're there, if the subdivision is fifteen, takes ten years to make, you got trees growing for. In certain sections for several years before, you know, after the house is is put in, you put the trees in, but, you know. It seems like if. Like you said, if these happen again, it it is it, we gotta uh go through the regs, which we've been talking about. You know, and the phase approach is tough, cuz he's. Uh, you know, and and these are deep conversations, and they're all gonna happen here, but for example. If he's gonna drive over, say the town's afraid to drive on his road with plows, to get to a road to plow, that was something they brought up. You know, and who, say I mess up their road, and he's gonna go, hey, you gotta pay for messing up the road, and then vice versa, if he drives on our road. We go, hey, you gotta pay to, you know, it should be something like uh. If we're gonna take phases, every phase he's gotta prorate for ten years. You know, if the subdivision's gonna take ten years, well, every phase you add. You gotta, we get to hold you to it because you're gonna be driving. Not actual excavators over, tracked excavators, but you're gonna be hauling. You know, all the equipment in and out. Um, is there a way to satisfy, hey, we don't like phases anymore, and and I think a lot of these answers gotta come from us. Fixing the regs, then.
The the phases have to happen, we've already proven what happens when you don't phase it, that would be Muska Pog. Uh, I mean, it ended up in state court because of that, so. Molten pond, I'm sorry, molten pond, yeah.
So I mean, yeah, what what's the best situation? I'm not sure in the end, and it obviously, if it's gonna get jammed up. Uh, you know, do we, do we fix it? Do we figure out what someone wants to fix it, or?
Think Delia said it would, it's best practice to accept it all at the end, like, let him, let him drive over his own roads and destroy them, and then put. Whatever repairs and top coat and then put it up.
Well, it's a thing, he. He don't wanna pay to fix his own stuff, so it's tough, and and I'm not saying it's it's good, wrong, or indifferent. But that's why you tell him, hey, if you're gonna drive over our road, we get ten years on every phase. I'm not saying this is an official stance of of just, it's just me. You know, if it's gonna take twen- ten years for you to finish it. Every section that we approve, we get ten years, and it's up to the engineer, town engineer, say Kevin Quinn or DPW to say. He's been driving over, you destroyed it, make him, and make him, make, put it in the regs, so it's an official thing, so we can't just go. There's no way, and I'm not saying just him, but anybody, you know, a way to go, well, I'm not, I get to drive on him. You're afraid to drive on him, but if they met, you know, with the plow thing, with this whole like land locking, uh, uh. You know, say a cul-de-sac or something, it's just um. I guess my long thing is just, i- i- you know, do we have to go through the regs, and I think we are, and. That way, th- this weighs out of this, instead of people. Cuz I guess my question is, next year, you know, when he resubmits, how how is it gonna be any different, except the grass is gonna be there. Um, you know, for these roads, erosion control, trees will be in by that time and.
Things regardless on this whole phasing thing. You know, I'm not gonna deny that when roads are accepted on a phased basis, that there is wear and tear. But nobody has shown me anywhere that there is anything significant about that wear and tear. How much of the wear and tear is due to additional construction? How much wear and tear is due to the garbage trucks that run up and down? Five different carriers. For garbage.
Well, it's heavy vehicles, yeah.
The school buses going up and down. Like I said, nobody has shown me anything like that. Go down to Woodside. And then take a look at Lindsay Circle, all of Lindsay Circle was built after Woodside was accepted. Show me the wear and tear. Show me. I'm from Missouri, show me.
Well, we're talking about best practices that have been developed by an industry, though, and like, she was saying best practice is. To accept them, either build them from the back out, or accept them once all the construction's done.
Building from the back out means you have to tear up.
He clearcuts it anyways.
All kinds, all all at once, and you're you're just risking enormous ecological problems.
Road also, wind down infrastructure. The only other thing I wanna talk about with with Bryce Lemon is that. Um, I I'd spoke with Chris and. And I know I'd said this, and Chris has said that's a granite curbs aren't acceptable. That's not a wholly true statement, I talked with Chris, and he said, what I didn't want was one-piece granite curbs. There's a three-piece granite curb that can go in that would work. Uh, uh, again, this is, I gotta talk to Kevin, this is not my skill set, but the fact that they're. Yeah, it's, so my question is. Because we haven't done any exceptions, do.
And then there's two other transition.
Yes, the transition pieces, so, tha- that's something I think we need to look into, and on the standpoint of Bryce Lemon. Since those didn't go in, should we ask for some type of compensation because the plan had them and they don't now? I guess I'm putting this out to the board, uh, I'm asking, cuz I. Me personally, I think the town should get something out, we're getting something potentially for trees, so why shouldn't we get something for granite curbs? I'm asking, I'm just putting it out to the board, I'm not saying, my opinion is, I think, because that was the original plan. Is that maybe we get something for it, I don't know, again, I, Kevin's gotta tell me, what's that worth? I have no idea, it's not my skill set.
I mean, for what it's worth, I I feel like supporting the the trees last and and the different. Uh, stipulations last week and and the streets was a mistake on my part. Um, and I I honestly think that getting into this whole swapping this for money. With this specific developer, like, I just, it. It reeks to me, and I I wanna stay as far away from it as I possibly can. Uh, he's very litigious, he doesn't like to pay his bills, I just, I do not see anything but. Frustration and bad coming from it, if I'm being honest.
Lenny Gengel. Seems to me had problems when he was doing his houses, he planted trees in there, and then he sold the house, the people came in, they cut the trees down.
If they do, they do, but at least we did. I mean, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but you know, this whole stormwater.
Maybe this tree thing should be left up to the individual to do it. We, we could revise our subdivision regulations, make something that does work, you know.
I just, if we do that, normally, we've gotta do it with the granite curbs too. You know, do we specifically call out a three-piece granite curb and, and that's the DPW director accepts that, and I'm fine with it, but.
And, you know, as far as the curbs are concerned, our problem has been the DPW directors. We've had so many of them, each one wants something different.
Yeah, and and I understand.
That was, I'm sorry, Tim, I didn't mean to cut you off, I was just gonna say, tha- that happened to be one of the comments that was made by one of the select board members, is that. It seems to be at the whim of the DPW director instead of what's in the regulation, but perhaps. Those residents bought there with an expectation of aesthetically what was on the approved plan, but then in reality, ends up. Not being what they purchased.
And that's my point to make about, maybe we should get something back that we can use somewhere else in that subdivision, I don't know. I I I'm just, I'm putting it out to the board, cuz. We haven't done a waiver that I remember on on the curbs, we just did an acceptance of what um Chris asked for. I just, I I gotta look back at the minutes, I don't remember.
And I just to quick add in, in the, the select board didn't catch it either, but in his letter, and it's okay, cuz maybe they're just, they're not thinking of construction. That he used the term. Uh, aberm, you know, versus Cape Cod, and he said, you know, and he think he. He said, whenever a Cape Cod berm is used, and if they're equating any berm to be a Cape Cod berm, which is okay. It's just a formality, it's uh, it's just wording, but essentially, it is a different shape in in. That was the main reason behind the, you know, it's like you can't have something banked and then a square. In this case, e- even just for the plows, so if we. You know, accept a certain style. It could be if you're going to install, either we require a certain berm. In a certain standard with each berm style, so that way. I know it's getting into weeds, but. You know, either that or we just say, say we pick one, we go.
This is for a free.
Definitely, definitely. The point that that you're talking.
Yeah, I just, I was looking for just the Bryce Lemon, about uh, what do we do about? We've got a subdivision with half. Um, granite and half. Um.
It's true, yeah.
Um, it, Tameeku made a great point, that's not what was on the original plan, so. That's why I was looking to get something back to compensate for what they bought and what we actually gave them. Again, it's, I'm putting it out to the board, I'm not saying I'm right, wrong, or indifferent, but. I'm looking to get some type of compensation, cuz that's not what we approved, and that's not what we got. The trees, I think we've negotiated on, I don't know if it's right, wrong, or different, but at least we've got some negotiation with that.
We, we voted a minor modification.
Okay, then if we did, I I just can't remember. If we did, then there's.
We voted on every road, and with conditions, so I mean, you know, when they came back with, hey, these aren't amendments. To the conditions of the subdivision approval documents, so it's like, do do we have to go through and do those again for them? To satisfy them for next spring?
That's ridiculous.
You know, um.
I do agree with the idea, though, of getting like some sort of standardized. We're gonna do the three-piece granite everywhere, cuz this, like, one development does, one development doesn't, that's fine. But then sometimes you get this overlap where it's in the middle of the development, it stops, and then it looks all janky, and. It would be nice if if, you know, we could get a consensus from Chris and maybe others in the profession. This is what people typically stick with, instead of like flip-flopping all the time.
It's the third generation of Chris. Christensen gonna be coming the new DPW director. So maybe you ought to ask him too.
Well, again, I I I can't say enough good about what Chris, he spent the time to explain what he was looking for, and also during that conversation. I asked him about the Friday review that he was gonna do, and he was actually heading out to do that on Thursday when I spoke with him. And then he's, he spent the time to explain this bylaw, which, I gotta tell you, I I thought the board was. Was cut off on that bylaw, so I can't say I'm gonna give a hundred and ten percent to what Chris did on his time and effort. Um, and it it's his show, if that's what he wants, that's great, but again. Uh, I was glad that he explained to me that he's not opposed to granite, just the type of granite, and the single one. He didn't want, um, he wanted a three-piece, and. I I I didn't get into the weeds, so what the hell does that mean? Cuz you're talking to an electrical engineer that has no idea about three-piece granite. So anyhow.
Anything more on those recommendations?
Can I just ask one question about Arrowhead? There's a note that says, um, there was a memo. Uh, from the eighth that Blair owed three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the per lot fee. Um, that was still owed, I.
Where the heck did that ever come from? Because I don't.
It was Britnell Estates that had the uh.
Though, I think he has outstanding fees for that.
The condition of Bear Hill two and two, and Delia brought that to the board, and you guys sent a letter to him in July. They calculated the number of lots in Bear Hill two for the condition, and it was, uh.
Thirteen lots at two fifty each?
So, so as of. So that's for bit, so ha- does that apply to Arrowhead?
Yeah, cuz Arrowhead's.
So, how come we? Didn't talk about that at our meeting?
We have brought it up uh, a few times before, and it always kinda comes up and goes right back down. Um, I don't know why we haven't.
See Bear Hill two. The special condition where that shows.
I bet if, it's probably in your email, cuz it was an agenda topic that the board talked about at a meeting, and Delia provided a copy of the conditions. Cuz the board asked her to specifically look for it, cuz she wouldn't have known to look for that.
Was on Bryce Lemon.
We did that, we collected that, and then that spawned another conversation, I believe, from you, Dick, that said, I thought we had those conditions for Bear Hill two. She found them, she had them, the board agreed to it, and they sent a letter.
I know her and I had talked about it, uh, uh, like, she she looked into it, and I know that that Claire was a a. Like, abreast of what was going on, knew about the fees and everything. Um, and I believe he's also said that he's not paying anymore, uh, is it engineering fees or something? So, I mean, we're having a lot of issues with collection of debt from this individual. And we're gonna run into some big problems when Kevin submits his his invoices and things, and we have no money to pay. Cuz Clee won't open up his his purse.
I was just gonna say, I think he partially paid on some lots, and he's, there's outs, or it's.
To me, nothing's been paid for for Arrowhead, correct, or Bear Hill two?
I have to check on.
Okay, let's let's verify that. The other issue. I had Keith, and I'm, it's been talked about a little bit, the, and again, I I haven't seen the whole meeting of the select board, but they were. Talking about this Turner report, and I'm gonna say in open meeting, I turned to you and said, that's not what we ask for. We ask for that Turner report, for them to look at the roads, the berms, and the rightaways. They spent all, most of that report, except the last paragraph, talking about erosion. I personally don't care about erosion, it has nothing to do with the road. Unless it's roading into the road, if it's roading on private property into an, onto another person's property. That is a citizen or legal issue, has nothing to do with the town or the planning board. Now, Turner did say that they could come back out, and if I remember the paragraph, do core studies and such like that. That's fine, i- if we find that Yankee didn't give us. That's fine, i- if we find that Yankee didn't give us a correct report or there was an error in it. And if I'm not mistaken, Kevin has not indicated in any report that those are incorrect or there's problems with them. So, I was struggling with why that Turner report was so important when it didn't follow what the board selectively asked our planner to do. That's my personal opinion.
You would have a hard time going out and get those core samples after Cle threatened them with a gun, that was interesting.
Well, I think that's that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, it mi- mine was, i- if they were going out there to look at.
I think if we all uh take a good hard look at. How the Turner firm was acquired, you'll you'll find the answer to.
Okay, I just, again, a- as an engineer looking at a report. I I I that report, and again, I I apologize.
Did you see, did you see the letter requesting the report from Turner?
I don't remember the exact verbiage, but yeah.
I don't believe we ever saw it.
We had, we had our discussions here as a board, that's about it, that's how she went for her search, search, whatever you call it.
Again, I I get back to the the board spent, the the Turner report had issues on it and they weren't addressed. There was no issues, had anything to do with the road on that report that I remember reading, it had to do with erosion. And they were clear that there was erosion problems, and I don't, I don't disband any of those, but it has nothing to do with the road except.
So they also noted that there there were issues before the fixes of the aprons were done.
Correct.
Now, once those aprons are are in place and the issues have been fixed. Does that, is that where we as a town planning board say goodbye, even though there were issues stemming from the road originally and the way it was built before it was fixed? Like, do we, are we then hands-off once they've put in the fixes, or are we involved with? Any part of the uh? Any part of the, you know, what happened because of the?
Well, learning experience, we definitely should get from a learning experience down the road, but if it's fixed and there's no more water issue, I wouldn't see it as a problem with the road.
Okay.
But you you are correct, that should be a learning experience for the board, if we ever have any more subdivisions or roads. That it drops off like that, we should ensure that those um aprons are in there as part of the plan.
Even in the subdivision regs to call out aprons.
I don't know if you can do that, because you you're you're trying to paint yourself into a corner.
Yeah.
I mean, that should be a review that from an engineering standpoint, when the subdivision is being reviewed viewed in the definitive plan, that it's covered.
Like Kevin's gotta go out and say.
Correct.
Hey, where, where's that apron, go put that in.
Yes, correct.
Dirt, even before.
But you're 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 right, Alex, that should, i- if that wasn't done and Turner found that, then I would have been, uh that report was worth it, but the report didn't. Didn't find any deficiencies in the road, it said that what they could do to check on stuff, and there were erosion issues. But I I didn't, uh again, I I I was frustrated when I had seen some of um the. Or heard some of the discussion that the Turner report was um a key component to uh the acceptance of Arrowhead. I was like, no, it wasn't.
I I even, I even asked the guy when he was here, did they note any deficiencies? Any obvious deficiencies in the road construction, he said no.
But I don't think this hiring Turner was in any way some sort of scheme by Delia to to do anything, I think Delia's been. A great planner and, you know, I I think we'd be very well to get someone just like her.
A little bit more experience.
A lot more experience.
Well, I gotta mention with.
I think I had any issues with her experience.
The report for me, it almost was just a background, I don't know if you'd use it as a scientific term, to just say. Again, at the end, yeah, if you want me to core the road, that's the only way you could maybe say.
Do what Yankee did, it's basically doing the Yankee reports all over.
Yeah, and I mean, he he provided background, it but you almost can't fulfill it, cause it's. Not a town road, so you you can't force Blair to let him drill into his property. And I'm not saying that's a hard stop for any of them legally or anything like that, but that's, it's like.
It'd be tough for us as a planning board to, and this is my opinion, board can have a difference. As an engineer, if I've got a report saying everything's good from a qualified Yankee, which is a third party. And then I'm gonna say, now I don't believe that, I wanna do something else, you better have some good reason to back that up. You better have some deficiencies and problems with the device or the issue that you're gonna argue about, cause I I can't. I can't force somebody to redo a redo a test that's already been done and satisfied, that's that's a tough one to defend.
Yeah.
And so that was my problem with their report, is they're asking, they can do it and they offered it, and I'm I'm fine with that. But again, to Norm's point, there was nothing in the report indicated, um other than what Alex said, that um there was issues, but they were resolved. They're resolved, so uh that was part of our review, that there were no issues with erosions between the the rightaway. And the berm, now there were issues with grass that was outside the rightaway that we said that we would. Give a condition you have until May thirtieth to get that grass in and and get it cleared.
Yeah.
But we found no other deficiencies with berms or anything else in the road, so I was struggling with that Turner report for Arrowhead. So anyhow, that's, that's, that was the only thing, and I know we're just dragging this on, so I'm gonna shut up and let's move on.
I I would just suggest that when we think about the these recommended, street acceptance recommendations going forward, you know. Something, being clear on what it is that the select board is expecting from us, and whether that is a checklist that says. Did the DPW sign off, did whatever sign off, did Quinn have anything, oh, okay, well then, if so, what did we say about it and what are the, you know, like, just. It it feels very kinda like. The paper's in the air, you know, but you know, just a a a report that says like, okay, here's where we looked at all these things, does he have any outstanding fines for this particular road? Are there any other whatever conditions, et cetera, and like, here's the board, here's the.
Formalized report?
The the, you know, the, and I'm not saying that we should have done that, cause we hadn't put something like that into place, but I I think that that's something that could. Be done fairly simply.
I absolutely do nothing, you should, a recommendation is a recommendation. If they have questions, they can go back and take a look at our meetings a- and see where they came from.
I'm just encouraging us to be clear, clear in communicating, I I don't, I don't see a downside, I don't, I don't feel like this is a. We didn't do it right, they're saying we didn't do it right, I'm new to this, but what I'm saying is that it's not clear to me. So I'm not sure how we could expect it to be clear to anyone else, uh having some sort of standard.
I I think, Lauren, you got a good point.
Seems pretty simple.
With with that new road acceptance policy that's in place. That's where I said, we need to have a con- a conversation with the select board, what's the expectation?
Yeah.
Because there, right now, I don't know of anyone.
Chime in as a staff member, I was looking at the policy again today, and I understand that those three roads didn't apply to the new policy. But we didn't follow it as far as our timing goes, and I think we end up. Putting ourselves in a place of of challenge, because you guys had your meeting to discuss that on the fourteenth. The select board had a meeting that same night, so nobody could attend, the meeting was not published, they then had to meet that Monday for the public hearings. Everything always feels like it's last minute in the eleventh hour, and then it feels almost like we're pitting each other against each other. When we should be working as a team, and I think if we were following the timeline as it was outlined in that road acceptance policy, this stuff would have been done. A long time ago, long before we were getting ready to place it on the warrant.
Yeah.
And we definitely need to look at that acceptance policy.
Yeah.
Because there there are two things, number one, it does not say what we are supposed to recommend.
Yeah, is it generals?
Now, we now, we made a recom- the recommendation we actually made was to place the articles on the warrant.
Correct.
Is that what they, what it, what is meant? Or are we making a recommendation right at that time on acceptance of the roads? It doesn't say.
Well, that's why I think having like a.
Doesn't require, it also doesn't require in any way a rec- a recommendation.
Norm, I will say MGL does, so MGL does require a recommendation of the planning board. Yes, but best practice has been that we have it for the printed warrant, so that the residents can see ahead of time what the different boards and committees recommend. So I think that's past practices, their assumption has been that the planning board's recommendation is. For you are in favor of this road passing at town meeting. Not that it was just to be placed on the warrant, cause you guys had kind of already previously had a discussion about whether or not you wanted to put them on as placeholders. Which which you had and they did initially.
That that recommendation is also in our subdivision regula- regulations.
Yeah, we have to do that.
Okay, but that's the recommendation at town meeting. This road acceptance policy that was was adopted is something different, and like you say, it doesn't even require. Us to make a recommendation, it mentions the recommendation, it does not say the planning board has to make a recommendation.
I'm just saying, if we work with the select board, it might be easier than like, hey, you didn't specifically say this or that and. You didn't dot this I or they crossed this T, like if we just kinda tried to come together on it, so it was less adversarial, like somebody had mentioned and. And if we had a streamlined like form that, you know, yes or no, and then like Lauren said, like you can elaborate. That would hopefully get rid of a lot of that confusion, which I feel like can breed some of that mistrust amongst the boards.
Well, I I don't appreciate um um, yes, I I agree with Tamika, there should be more communications. When a, when a select board's at a meeting and talking about the planning board not doing their job about uh squaring away pumping stations. And having the fees for those, y- you're starting, uh excuse my language, a a match that. If you wanna start the finger pointing match, then game on, because I'm tired of the finger pointing match. And I'm gonna be, right, since we're on TV, I'm gonna say, listen. That issue with the pumping stations, those drawings were sent out to the DPW director at the time, and not Chris, please. Chris has nothing to do with this, cause those were done in twenty eleven, twenty oh six, but those drawings were sent out, if somebody wanted fees. Or cost for those, it comes from the DPW, the planning board does not make set fees or what's gonna be done with pumping stations. It's the sewer commission and the DPW, to have somebody on the select board say the planning board should have handled that, I I'm up to here with that. If you're gonna start pointing fingers and you wanna start the the war, then let's go, but I don't, I think to Alex's point, the best practice is. We should work together, have these conversations before you put them out on public TV, and that's what's been happening in the past, and I personally am tired of it. So I have to respond here, because I'm frustrated that I gotta listen to it on TV and I and. We're taking a black eye, I'm tired of the PR, of the planning board getting black eyes, are we perfect? No. Everybody makes mistakes, but constantly being reminded of it on a subdivision that was approved two decades ago. I I I'm up to here with it, I'm tired of it.
So, if we were sort of following timelines and we had something that was like, here's the thing that we'll. Give to them, we would presumably have enough time to have some back and forth before meetings. We give them this thing and they say, whoa, that's that Turner thing, that seems weird, like we could have some kind of back and forth. Before it's. Potentially contentious because it's only in meetings, so I I think, I think it's sort of a twofold thing, one, it's. I don't know, I'm not, I keep saying format, but some kind of standardized record keeping, that frankly, even for ourselves to say, did we do this? Did they do this, did they did, is there anything outstanding for him, that's a fairly standard thing that we can track? And also doing this far enough in advance that we have the time to have. Discussion that's not rushed, difficult, you know, um. That feels blamy and, you know, I I I, the timelines laid out in that are are relatively far out in advance in that. Is the reason that we've sort of things have felt rushed because? We needed to get stuff done before meeting, I mean, i- is the is the issue that we didn't get sort of stuff from Blair early enough, or is it that, okay? So then we should have said, we didn't get it early enough, we'll see you in the spring, that's my feeling. I mean, if we've got a policy, we should follow it, or else why have a policy?
So I think I was wrong in my support last week.
I think we've uh.
Beat this to death.
To death, yeah, twice over.
Yes, but we need to think about what we're going to do, so that it doesn't just keep happening over and over again, we don't have to do that right now, right here, but but we, you know.
That's why I think a discussion with the select board on what, you've got a new policy out there, what's the expectation? The timelines are laid out there, what do you expect from the planning board? Cause we we have not done, to Norm's point, we've basically in the past said, okay, this this road's ready to go, put it on the warrant. And then during town meeting, like I said, the moderator, the the select board will say it's on the warrant, uh FICOM uh supports it. Um and then the moderator will say the planning board, what's your opinion, and we'll say either support, uh no action or don't support. And that's all they ever ask.
We where, again, I'm sorry, I maybe we don't need to waste time on this, but where did the street acceptance policy that is fairly new or revised, like where did that come from?
John, John gave it to us.
Okay.
Yeah, the planner put it together for the, cause it's select, I'm not, select board was asking for something like that for future.
So it was actually John's idea, it was John's idea to put it into place, um but because. Technically, street acceptance lies with the select board, it had to be a select board policy.
Um okay.
But it was really, the language was largely driven from um like a planning board perspective of how they go through the process.
Okay.
And it started with Dave George, Lauren, cause he was frustrated with the the last minute Louis. And he wanted some time put in there, so he he put something together, but not, to Tamika's point, not a policy. It was more of a uh planning board, if you're bringing in the road, this is, this is what I'm looking for. And I think the select, uh John was like, no, we need to put this into documentation, and then the select board took it around with, and I think it was great, I I applaud him for that. Cause I think we need to do that, but the problem is, w- we we need to understand between the two of us, what do they need? And what do they want from us, and I don't think that's happened, and that's why I suggested we have that conversation.
Yeah.
A- and a modification of that policy.
Yeah.
To make it clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Might I recommend that maybe after the holidays and and we get settled with a new town administrator, maybe we schedule a joint meeting and we have.
I do.
To to kinda go through the policy and make sure everybody's on the same page, so we can all be go team, you know, on the same team.
I agree, Tamika, I think in Ja- late January, early February, we should get this taken care of, so down the road. Before spring town meeting and any roads come in, we're clear on what our expectations that we have to give to the uh um select board.
Next item on the agenda, November eleventh meeting.
This is gonna be a long talk, I can see it.
Why don't we just move it to the twelfth?
Yes. I'm making motion, move it to the twelfth.
Second.
No, uh geez, when's the twelfth, is it just?
That's just.
That's the next day after.
Wednesday, Tuesday to Wednesday, yeah, that's fine.
Anything further?
Motion rate, cause I wasn't gonna come on the eleven.
All in favor?
Alright.
I'll entertain the motion too.
No, what do you do, Norm, all I like to do is.
I wanna know how come master plan was not.
Tamika, send an email out, Dick, I'd actually sent something, I'll give you a quick one on that, the um I had forgotten. I was frustrated because the open space committee hadn't gotten back to us, and I guess they'd sent it to the state to be reviewed. And somewhere in early November is the four months where they should have got, would should get back to the OSP, the open space committee.
Yeah.
And from there, that recommendation should come to us after they get done with that, is that correct, Tamika?
Correct, yep, so we're just.
So we're in a waiting period for the state, so I I apologize for my frustration, cause the the only thing I was gonna say is. And and this was probably for the select board, is where I got most frustrated, is I went on our website. And I couldn't find anybody for the open space committee, the chairman or the committee or anything.
That's on the conservation commission page, cause it's a subcommittee of the conservation commission, cause after you sent your email, I double-checked to make sure. Because obviously we need that info and so it's on their page.
Uh okay, it's too many clicks, I wouldn't have found it, I wouldn't even thought.
Subcommittees, yeah.
Cause I thought it was appointed from the select board. And as a as a full committee, I didn't know it was a subcommittee of the conservation commission.
It is, that's how it arranged, but you're correct, that the select board did appoint them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's my mistake, but Dick, the point is is. I- if we don't have this done by December, I'm really gonna be frustrated, cause this is working on you, in January, it'll be year three. And we 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 gotta get this done, because there's a, there's supposed to be a committee formed off of that um master plan. To actually start and to start putting together what needs to be done. Implementation, that hasn't been done yet, we're we're dragging our feet on a three-year-old byproduct, so anyhow, that's it. So Tamika, thanks for getting back to me, I didn't, I couldn't remember any of that discussion, and I went back and looked at emails and sure enough, but it's six months old in July. I can't remember breakfast, so uh, but I appreciate it, thanks.
Anything else?
That's it.
Move to a drawing.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Oh crap. Did anybody get, uh, just before we finish the eyes, take a look at this and see if there's any comments, get them to me, cause I've gotta have them to Seth by Friday. That's the end of the budget review, um. CMRP, just to give you a quick synopsis, planners. CMRP, just to give you a quick synopsis, planner salary, best guest, support staff is what I talked about. Um, planning board outside support, that's something that'd be outside of our um, uh, our revolving fund if we needed something. Um, I just put some uh, money in there, get a line item, supplies, uh, you know, if we need, I don't know, I just put, uh, get a line item in there. Board stipend, the board stipend uh, up until twenty oh nine was a thousand dollars. And we we dropped it back to five hundred to help the town out, I personally, I'll let the board comment on this, I. We've done enough good, good faith, everybody else was restored this year to their salaries and to their. Whatever, everything was restored this year on the budget, so I feel, why isn't, why isn't the planning board restored?
Does the associate member get a stick?
You guys were restored. You guys were being restored at special town meeting.
No, but I meant to the original monies that we had way back when, um, that we've taken a hit, but. Yes, the we're on the, we're on the Warren article, but we've got two, a a no recommendation and a uh.
No action.
No action, for that, for that portion of it, no, you don't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But, um, and then the CMR PC fees, that's what we covered for CMR PC, that's a standard fee. And then planners expenses, I just put some money in there, so if the planner needs to buy something or needs to go out and get something, they've got money in there, because. We need line items, the problem is right now, the only thing the planning board has for budget is salary and CMRP and stipend, there's no other. And with these line items put in, if we need to transfer monies around, we can. Without them, there's nowhere to transfer monies to, so I was asking to get some line items from the treasurer, collector, whoever. Whoever does that, get us some line items.
I got an idea, laptop fund for the planner.
That is part of the town's uh, um, general fund for supplying, I don't, Tamika. We typically don't do materials for each individual departments, do we, for like, equipment? Laptops?
Yeah, so there isn't like a general place that we take it from each individual department funds, whatever that particular department head needs.
Alright, well.
That's why I'm thinking like Microsoft Surface, not high end, but twelve hundred bucks.
Before I would do that, I would ask, what's the inventory of the town's laptops?
Zero.
Where's all the, where's all the uh, the laptops that were purchased for the uh, um, uh, what was that? Bad disease that everybody had? Covid, where's all the laptops? Nope, there there's Lenovo's, I saw them over in the uh, fire station, it was Chromebook or Lenovo's over there, or maybe those were Chromebooks, I apologize.
Yeah, Chromebooks aren't compatible with Microsoft products.
Well, that's the outside support money.
Well, yeah, I I guess what I'm gonna say is, I know John said, hey, I need a table, I need this, he brought it up to us. And we uh, spent it.
We we can do that, we've got a revolving fund that we can take from, what my point here was just to get some line items that if, because with the revolving fund. You can transfer out of a revolving fund to an account in the general, that's part of the general fund. You just can't take general fund money and transfer into the revolving fund, that's a no-no. So one thing I did learn from the accountant is that we can, we can take it out and put it somewhere, we just can't put it back in.
Yeah.
So that's why I wanted to get some line items in for us, so take a look, if anybody's got comments, send it to me, please. Otherwise, uh, Norm, if you're good with this, I'll get this into Seth on on Friday and uh. Um, let it flow, in the past, this would go through the planner, but we don't have one, so. I, and in the past, I've taken this and just given it to John and say, here's what we'd ask for and let him fill in the rest. But we don't have one, so I just grabbed my spreadsheet that I used and did it for, and we're on the twenty twenty seven budget, if that's understandable or not, so. Twenty twenty six has already been approved, so think about it, if you got any of the comments or additions, please don't hesitate to send them to me. And uh, at the end, Norm, I'll get you to look over if there's been any changes and then we'll just get it to Seth. Let him run with it, but please, town meeting, go to it, cause stipends are back on the board.
Do you guys want me to post a meeting for you that night?
Yes. Cause we're gonna have to recommend Lindsay, if I'm not mistaken, cause Lindsay's on the Warren article, am I not?
I think you guys recommended it that night, didn't you?
Yeah, but typically we do it at the town meeting too.
Oh, okay, yep, I'll post one for five thirty then.
Perfect, alright, okay, I'll shut up now.